Yeah, does he do with the act as guilt?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is a working meeting. It's not our regular meeting with the Board of Selectmen. The Board likes to meet before town meeting with the Finance Commission Board because the work they do is very detailed and we need to talk with them about where we're going with this warrant when we go to town meeting and go to the election. And I think even though it's not a regular meeting and there won't be public comment, we should say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Does everybody have Article seven?
Yes, it's a spreadsheet.
Every- yeah, spreadsheet, okay. Last night we met with Denise. We went through this, so we'll do that again. How does that sound? We might have questions. Do you want to go through everything line by line? How do you want to do this, Bill?
Well, what has happened to us is we haven't had any, some final numbers on some of these.
Okay.
That's, that's, which makes it difficult for us to make any decisions on.
What would you like? We've got numbers plugged in here.
Administrative assistance salary.
Okay, that's 105.
No, that's 20.
Excuse me?
That's 20.
Oh, hi. Did I scare you?
Yeah. When was the lo- sounds like a good deal. Where do you sign up? When did you get the budget the first time, these numbers? First budget, we like these numbers, the spreadsheet, you know, because I, we just got them last night. I haven't, I'm feeling the same budget.
We have one since, we have the same one since we've had since Monday, so.
Okay, alright.
But I think you guys met Monday and today to maybe finalize some of the numbers.
All days are blending because we've been here about four or five days.
We got these, this, we got this spreadsheet. I looked at it, we looked at it last night for the first time, so.
Right.
So we'd like.
Well, that's what, well, the problem is, is um.
Our decisions tonight could be very difficult.
Yeah, we're kinda, we're kinda up against it ourselves and, and because we don't know the final numbers on different categories, I know that there was a shortfall and so, and we don't know if there's been some job descriptions that have been changed and, and stuff like that.
Right.
Just trying to find out.
Okay.
Where we're at with those. Would it?
Go ahead.
Would it make sense to have Denise go through the presentation again that she did last night, but Reader's Digest version?
Well, I think they're looking at you for the three issues that weren't determined that you've now since resolved. I think is the first thing that they're looking at.
That's fine.
You've seen all the other numbers, correct? Except we had some that we hadn't filled in?
Right, there were some recommendations, but we didn't know where that, where that, I know there was an executive session meeting with contracts and stuff like that. The Selectmen were getting resolved and we just didn't know if those have been completed and, and so without that, we didn't really know exactly what we had.
We did complete two executive sessions this week. Two contract negotiations were conducted. And we have voted numbers for two positions. One of them is the Finance Director and the other one is for the Fire Chief. So the numbers that you see there, the 105.
Yeah.
Is what we voted.
Okay.
And if I can bring your attention to the next page at the bottom in yellow. Twenty-seven thousand, six forty-two for the Fire Chief was voted this evening. And if you need to know a little detail, that's an increase of two and a half percent on the base hourly rate multiplied by nineteen hours instead of, what was the other?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. That does not trigger any benefits because we stayed with below the twenty hour threshold.
And, and I would like to go back.
Hopefully that's.
To clarify the 105. Um, there was a lateral position move which would be legal in personnel. That's what that increase was for.
Can I give some detail on that? If you, if you brought that up?
Certainly.
Alright, so now if we're focused on that line item, the 105, which is an increase for the Finance Director. The Board of Selectmen voted that number. And it wasn't just a wage adjustment. We also had what we considered to be a role enhancement. So we identified eight areas and I can, unfortunately, I've got it in my notes, but I can share it with you in a better format. But we identified eight areas of responsibility that we've asked the Finance Director to assume. And these areas actually she has been doing since January, at least, if not even before that. So we applied a retroactive increase in her salary which equates to a hundred and five thousand a year to do what we hired her to do plus eight more specific areas. Five of them are related to personnel. So essentially, there's almost a job within a job as Personnel Director. If you want, I can kind of spit out what those eight areas are and then I'll, you know, we'll, in fact, I can give this to you and you can, you can read it and then if I can get a copy back, that's fine.
Joe, we haven't, we're not ready to give that out. You can read those things.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. So, alright, so I'll read them to you. And I'll do a Reader's Digest, a summary version, okay? Just if I go too fast, just let me know. One of the, and Bill brought this out. One of the new areas for our Finance Director is to coordinate legal services with Town Council on all legal matters affecting the town. We expect her to do this through, handle legal matters, negotiations, personnel matters autonomously to some degree. Of course, you know, always being in touch with, with the Chair.
Who handled those before?
Um, the previous.
We didn't have anyone, I don't believe.
Your Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen.
Administrative Assistant, good question.
But we didn't actually have a personnel person.
Well, yeah, I'll go through them, you know, I've got them. You're right, we didn't. The next item is Rights, Rights Board of Selectmen Town Meeting Articles and Motions. And then, of course, with all the proper posting and overseeing the, publishing, the printing of the documents and the distribution. I don't know if, Bill, you have the same question and maybe we can answer it for you. Who did that before?
The same person.
Secretary. Are you ready for the third? Alright. Uh, ensures that complete and full records of the administrative activity of the Board of Selectmen are maintained, including the preparation, meeting agenda, and all of the, again, there's a lot here, but provide, I'll just read it. You can pick up what, what you can. Provides background information on agenda items in order to assist Selectmen in their deliberations. Certified mailings, executive session notices. And Bill, if you have that question, I want to read your mind, the answer's the same. So those are three out of eight. The next five are substantial duties that we feel the Board of Selectmen can comfortably delegate to the position. We're very comfortable and proud to say that we can specifically delegate to our current Finance Director. She's quite capable. One of them is to oversee all personnel appointed by the Board of Selectmen and all personnel matters by providing assistance and guidance to department heads and employees. This is what Bill was talking about. You know, we've now had this personnel component. Now, I'm gonna give you the, I'm giving you the details. The next one, monitor and review personnel law changes, personnel policies, job classification. And I, I think, even though I don't have this written in here, it's not a contract, I think the personnel bylaws need to be reviewed as well. And we're, we're gonna work with Denise to help us audit that, if you will. The next one is clearly required by law, enforces the town's equal opportunity, excuse me, the town's equal employment opportunity in discrimination and harassment policies. And approves all job vacancy notices. Notice the word approve. I'm gonna mention that in a few minutes, what we're hoping to do here. Maintains, the next item, maintains detailed personnel records and town employee files. Maintains and updates personnel listing and administrative data and the necessary forms. The last one, which is interesting, at least to me, interview or oversee the interview process for all employees appointed by the Board of Selectmen. What we're hoping to do, and I think Betty, if I may, articulated this very well the other day. And Denise had brought up this idea as well, is that we're hoping to see that the five-member board will take on more of a macro level policy setting position and begin to deviate from the traditions of the Board which have evolved over many decades of perhaps being a little bit too micro level. Not by any fault of anyone, it's just the way things have been done in the past and with the complexities of laws today and, and all kinds of situations. We feel that we want to look more like a school committee where we're really a macro level policy setting board. And some of this nitty gritty stuff, we, we have our Finance Director handle. We did look that these changes did not materially change the position to such a degree that we would be in violation of the law. Because as you know, it required a state law to create the Finance Director's position. So we can make it more robust as we've done and as long as ultimately we don't change the title, we're good to go. That's really important. So I don't know if you have any questions of either any one of us here, but I, I, I hope that I've articulated the Board's position. This is not my idea. This is what we kind of collectively came up with.
The only concern I have, and this is, I've seen this happen in the town before.
In this town or other towns?
This town. Is that we don't come back next year and we say we hired an Administrative Assistant for 25 grand and that was a mistake. And we really needed someone for more hours.
For more hours.
And we back, we go right back to the salary we were at before. And also that we've spread our Finance Director in charge of so many items that we've spread it too thin. I've seen, I, I give an example. We, we receive a lot of stuff, email from Denise, tons of stuff. She's really been great about trying to keep us current with all that stuff. But because she's tied up with the Selectmen so much, she hasn't really been in the seat that Greg was in before to ask the questions during meetings on different things. We're doing the email thing and we're doing, you know what I mean? It isn't, a lot of times when we sit down as a Finance Board, we usually have the Finance Director there to be able to bounce some ideas off of. And she knows the answers. She knows where to get it from. So she gets it for us at a lot of times. Sometimes that extends into another meeting before we get the answer. And maybe it might not even be that. It might be not even her fault. It might be just something that she doesn't have the answer for yet. But that's my concern that down the road, that, you know, we're gonna say, okay, well, number one, we haven't even found out if we can get an Administrative Assistant for $25,000 and how many hours that job's gonna be and the job description and all that. And I know that doesn't really come under my umbrella. That comes under your umbrella. But what concerns me is I've seen this in the past that someone said, oh, we don't need that job. And then next year, they say, we need that job. So that's, that's one of my concerns with that.
Well, as you know, the Administrative Assistant slash Confidential Secretary to the Board of Selectmen has retired. She retired in September. She has been working to finish up a lot of work in the office for the past six or seven months. She's been working with Denise. Denise has been doing a lot of the work that Joe just mentioned. And we conferred with Denise and asked her what she could take on comfortably. And could we assist her with a part-time Administrative Assistant, probably eighteen or nineteen hours. There are times we're very busy, such as this time, and there's a lot of downtime. So Denise, would you like to speak to any of Bill's concerns?
No, I mean, I do agree that obviously the Finance Board meets on Monday nights, the same night as the Selectmen. And my priority has been to attend the Selectmen's meetings. I mean, I've stepped out a few times when I can or I excuse myself and drop off information. But it hasn't been, you know, everything is done through email or passing in the hallway. And that's something that certainly, you know, obviously this year, but next year could be maybe a discussion of what nights I'm where. Because I felt the same way. I mean, I can't give you advice or recommendations personally if I'm in their meetings versus your meetings, so.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing the Board of Selectmen change, at least during budget, budget time.
And I think that's.
We meet, we meet two or three nights a week anyways, so it's not a big deal for us.
And we could change that up so Denise could be available the nights you're here. Which you've got very accustomed to Greg being in the building, coming in, sitting with you, giving you advice, giving you numbers.
Right. And it isn't, it isn't that Denise isn't in the building. She's just sitting in another room.
Yeah, we probably have monopolized a lot of her time.
Yeah, you know, and I'm sure she feels like she's doing the juggling act too.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
One of the, one of the biggest issues I see, I've said it in the past, is that I believe that we all should sit down at a table like we're doing tonight and we should have the dialogue. And you guys should be well informed and we shouldn't be fighting with each other. I don't mean fighting, but I mean, we need the discussion. It's good discussion. And I think that when we sit down and we have the dialogue, we're all gonna get along, we're gonna get the job done and we're gonna be professional about it. And passing in the hallway, I agree. I think we, we need to try and, you know, get Denise and, and get a night that we all can or you can once in a while with her. I'm a hundred percent in favor for that.
If I just, the spreadsheet you have, you identified 25, so that may have been a change. I think we've retweaked some of the requirements, so we dropped that down to 20.
Yeah, we're gonna make 20.
That, that item is 20.
We're gonna make you feel even more uncomfortable, Bill. We went down to 20.
And I do think that that, so that is based on about 15 to 18 hours a week at a salary of somewhere between 18, 18 and $20 an hour. And I think with the job description that I've received from other communities, we, the desire is to change the description a little bit. It's not going to be an Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen. It's gonna be more of a general Administrative Assistant, assisting me, the Highway Department, other departments in Town Hall if they need it. So we're gonna try and make it a little less specific, not the tasks that the current position was handling, you know, not legal, things like that, obviously. So it's gonna be more of a clerical administrative position. So I think that is a safe number. I don't think we'll have any issues hiring someone for 15 to 18 hours a week.
What about the other numbers? Are you pretty, you, I don't think, we, we kind of highlighted the ones that we knew you'd be interested in.
I think the, I think you were in negotiation with the Fire Chief. He gave us that, right?
We just concluded.
Yeah, did you want me to repeat the details?
I, the only thing I had a question on that, you said 19 hours.
Nineteen hours, yeah.
Isn't 19 hours when you go into medical benefits?
No, 20.
It is 20?
The GIC is 20 hours.
It is 20?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I have two minor changes. If you would like me to just address them now.
Okay.
The first one is the stipend for the Tree Warden. The only person that returns papers for the elected Tree Warden position is a town employee and therefore he cannot get paid the stipend in his salary. So we've removed that $300 from the Tree Warden stipend line.
What line number is that?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
And then the other minimal change is line number 38, the $400 for Elder Services of Merrimack Valley Assessment. Pam Black here informed me last night that we actually haven't paid that in many years. Many council on agings do not if they're in sort of times of need with the budget. So she did some research today and told me that we are safe dropping that down to zero as well. So that 400 has gone down to zero. And those should be the only other changes from what you have.
There was mostly, most of the raises were 2%, but there was one person that was looking for 3.8, I think, right, or whatever it was?
3.18.
Yeah.
What line item was it?
Um, the assessors' office.
Number eight.
And when you go online, the one that's showing online is showing more money than what's here, so I don't, I don't even know where that ended.
What's online?
I don't know. Someone had told me they read online today that that was $55,000 and not $50,000. And I'm like, oh, that isn't what I have. I have 50,000.
You have 50.
Was, was the rec, was the recommended, but I thought that that was more than everybody else in Town Hall also. I, I thought it was.
No, I think that's the, I think that you're confusing that with the Building Inspector requested increase. That was 55.
Oh, that, right, but also the Board of Assessor, she had a different, she had more than the 2%.
Yes.
She was asking for a, a more of an increase than the rest of the group because she claims she had more responsibilities than, than the other people.
Yes, that is correct. The 2% would have brought her to 49 and change and she asked for an increase up to the 50,000.
So was that, have, have you made it, well, obviously, that wasn't negotiations, right, so?
That was not.
That wasn't, so that was.
No, that was not. So that's.
That's a good find because I, I didn't, I missed that one.
Yeah, I thought that.
I just learned about it now.
Yeah, I thought we were actually trying to stick, that, that's the tough part about this stuff is we're asking everybody to hold the 2%, you know? And the Building Inspector is another category that was asking for more. And he's, he's saying, there's more building and there's more things going on now. His job, he, he described his job at different times as changed on how they paid him over time. At one point he had, it was like a commissioned salesman at one point, I think was basically, it was a, he was getting a certain percentage of how many houses were being built. And then it went to a flat salary.
Right.
And then he said, then they lowered it again and then they, and then he's looking to raise it again. So I don't know.
Why? Because he's busier? Is that what he said?
He, he says that he has more, more things on the agenda to deal with. And he, he claimed it was a lot of different things that he has to come out and do inspections for, so that. But he was well above the 2% also.
He requested 12%.
Well, that wasn't granted.
What, what line is that? I'm looking around.
Twenty-four.
Line 24, okay. Thank you.
So you went with the Finance Director recommended amount?
Yeah.
That's the 2%.
Same with the Board of Assessors, right?
I know. Finance Director was recommending 2% increase?
For the Building Inspector, yes.
Sixty-nine, 102 to sixty-nine, 084.
Oh, yeah, and then I asked, I asked a question about, I had this partially answered for me before, but the custodian or facility's part-time employee, uh, in municipal buildings, and that's right at 17. Apparently we had a con, we did have a contract at one time and that didn't work out.
Yeah, so we still pay a cleaning service, $20,000 a year to clean Town Hall, the library, the police station, the fire station in South Groveland once a month. So all buildings are done two to three times a week except for South Groveland. And I know the Board can speak to this, but I'll just give you a brief discussion. So when I started here, my very first week on the job, I had to figure out how to shut the heat off in the building and turn the air conditioners on. And I spent more time in the basements of each building with which switches I needed to flip. And then if we have a pipe burst, it's me managing the burst pipe and standing with the contractors. And if there's, the toilets are plunged, I have to go in there and plunge them. And at some point I said to the Board, you're wasting money paying my salary to plunge toilets. It's just a waste of money. There should be someone to fix light bulbs and replace ceiling tiles and do cleaning. You know, someone to do light cleaning work and light maintenance in facilities. You know, there are boxes that need to be moved that, you know, we have no way to move them unless the Highway Department comes in and helps us. And they've been great, but obviously they're stretched thin. So I did say to the Board, I did ask if they would consider eliminating the cleaning service and bringing in, again, a part-time person to combine both of those facilities, custodial. And they overwhelmingly supported that and thought it was definitely necessary here. And I'm sure they can speak to how they felt on that.
It's, it, there's always, every aspect of these things, it always, obviously, we must have went contract with this because they must have thought it was cheaper at the time.
So we've had this, I'm sorry, we've had the same company since 1980, early 80s. It's been, it's, it's a father and daughter. So it's been the same company all along, just so you know.
The thing is, is that once you get into hiring, it, it all depends on the hours and now it's that, then that, that 20 turns into 47 because of $27,000 family plan or whatever, a $24,000 family plan.
No benefits?
No, this is a non-benefit eligible. It's again, it's part-time, again, probably 15 to 18 hours a week.
15, 18 hours?
Yes.
How many hours do the people that are here now come in?
It's tough to guess because they come through Town Hall, Monday is an empty trash, then on Wednesdays they vacuum. They do some light mopping of the floor. They clean the bathrooms. And they do the same thing in the library. They go on Saturdays for the library and the police station. So we're not getting 18 hours a week. You know, we're getting light cleaning and no facilities work.
So is this person gonna also handle those other areas as well as this building?
Yes.
And then where are those, where is that cleaning expense in here from prior years?
It was all just lumped under the utilities line of the municipal buildings.
Oh, it wasn't broken out, we should.
It was just in the.
And it's also fair to say if we, with a number that we put in for this mine item, it should be voted on so it wouldn't be changed during the year. Am I correct? We can't, I mean, we can't go and change it and say we're gonna add 10,000 to it or whatever.
Correct. No, and I don't think we need to.
No, I'm just saying, so we got a number built in, we're gonna have to stick to that number.
Correct.
More things have been broken out and broken down so they're clearer.
Right.
Not just all in, like, one catch-all.
Right.
Denise has taken the time to do that.
You have.
She'll speak to postage and all those things. She can get to that in a moment if you want.
We have a category, and we have two different things that two people are asking for two same things, it seems. And I'm not really sure how that's gonna go. You have the DPW's asking to get two more full-time people. The cemetery, if, I hate, I'll go historical on what I know. The cemetery at one point, Bob Ericallian said I could use another plow guy in the winter. The cemetery guy was working in the summers at the cemetery. So we're gonna take him and they were gonna put him into the. You, you work in the winter, work in the summer, plow, taking care of, mowing the theater, mowing the cemetery. So that went back and forth. So what happened was is the last budget, they eliminated that, that gentleman that was with the cemetery. So there was no line item for a mowing guy. So when the cemetery commissioners came in, they talked that they needed two part-timers for the cemetery.
In addition to their one full-time?
In addition to their cemetery, cemetery superintendent. So they had said they, for, for mowing, for mowing the grass. Now, Bob Ericallian, when I asked him about his two full-time people, he was asked, I says, what's the issue? Why do you need two full-time guys? He says that he, they have more responsibility mowing grass. He spends two days a week mowing grass. And that some of those people that do the mowing of the grass, it isn't as simple as you can just get, you know, the young kid for the summer and have him mow the grass. That some of that's, some of that equipment needs license, certain licenses to operate. And so he said he needed two full-time guys. He said mowing grass. Now, I don't know if that was mowing grass at the cemetery also. And this is what, one of the things was is that we're getting more and more fields. There's more and more things, so there's more and more maintenance. So, you know, it was kind of a joke. We're watering the grass now, so it's growing.
Sure.
We didn't before, it would die. Now we actually have nice green grass. So, but it, it grows. You have to, you have to mow it. So I don't. So I don't know if those two intertwine with each other. And that's, and I don't know if we're talking the same, you know, apples and oranges or whether, because at one point, he was taking care of that. And then when you talk to the cemetery commissioners, and you're gonna understand their point, that, you know, you don't want just anybody mowing between cemetery stones and knocking over some, and some real ancient cemetery stones too. So, and you wanna have the right piece of equipment for that too, you know? You know? So that, that was part of the problem they were having up there with that. But the two are asking for different things, but I don't know if there's a communication gap or, or not. Or whether it's, it just, he's talking, I'm just mowing the fields for the softball fields and the, and athletic fields down here and all that type of stuff. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Do you want me to speak to that?
If you would, because you're talking highway department, you're talking cemetery department.
Yes.
You're talking mowing grass at the height of the season. And then when the people in the cemetery don't have a lot to do, are they joining Bobby's crew for the winter? And I think that, I think that has changed.
That changed, right. And, but what happened was is that the cemetery commissioner says unfortunately, you know, that that line got cut out. So then they were scrambling because they didn't realize that that line got cut out. Because originally, the deal was that they shared that, that person with, with the DPW. So when they went through town meeting, and then they realized they didn't have a line item for, for mowing grass.
I think Denise has met with all of those people, and she can probably tell you who's working there and what season.
So the request from the highway department with the two full-time people is one senior operator, one senior operator and one junior operator. So the senior operator requires specific licenses to use some of the bigger pieces of equipment, the heavy machinery. The junior operator would not require those types of things. Would require one CDL, but nothing, no hoisting or anything. So the thought was that currently, the practice has been that, yes, two days a week, he's using his heavily licensed men to cut grass. So the thought was that the junior operator would spend instead of two days, probably five days doing all of the fields, the pines, VZ Park, town hall, the police and fire station, so that that junior operator for the summer months would really be dedicated to mowing the lawn. And then the senior operator would be used on other projects, on things like the road work and the potholes and the drainage work that he's working on. It has still been the practice up thrown, including this past winter, that if he needs additional assistance with plowing, the cemetery superintendent does come out and help the public works. Likewise, if the cemetery needed help with something in the summer, that, his guys would go and assist. I don't know if he has the capacity to give either one of those people full-time at the cemetery. Obviously, their big season is, say, April to October when they really need someone doing lawn care and maintenance work. So I think, you know, to have the part-time, to have part-time summer help focused specifically on the cemetery department, it probably is not redundant from what the highway department is looking for because they really don't include the cemetery in their normal lawn cutting.
So i- is the, is the plan to hire two more additional people for the, do we see a need for the DPW to have those two additional people?
That's what's up for discussion tonight.
That's a discussion that we're having.
Okay.
With you.
I, I was, I was asking a, a question similar to yours. Bill, where I thought maybe there'd be some overlaps, maybe the highway department can pull duty on some consistent basin, basis at the cemetery. But in understanding the junior operator, the senior operator, and the workload that they have, and that we do have more fields, and there's a problem. I see a total separation. So I, speaking for myself at this hour, I would be in favor of the two hires that are being proposed by the highway department plus the part-time seasonal hire for the cemetery so that everyone can get all their work done. And we don't have to depend on the highway department to take care of anything significant during the summer months in, in the cemetery. Is that an additional item? Yes.
That's Joe's opinion?
That's my opinion, yes, absolutely. We haven't voted on it, we haven't even discussed it. We, we were presented this last night.
But that, that's what, that's what we were presenting. Just to show you again, we're on the same page.
Right.
And I, and I don't know, you know, I don't know if, uh, I, I know, it's obvious we have a lot more greener grass everywhere. I mean, it's just, uh, yeah, it is. It's, you know, it looks, it looks good. We are taking good care of the field.
As we grow.
And I think some of the fields are taken care of by the volunteers that.
A lot of the people like baseball and softball and.
I believe, uh, this, this South Groveland, right behind the fires there. I know that, that group, they're, uh.
Does great work.
They believe that, you know, they, they keep on top of their athletic field, their little league field.
Very particular about how they feel so.
So that's, I don't know, you guys had an opinion on that? Now, there was a net, a net of eighty-five thousand? I lost the details in my notes on how that worked.
I don't think it was quite that much because we reduced the part-time line. So the, if you fund the two full-time positions, we would reduce the part-time line down to five thousand because we would not need the part-time.
So the net increase was like eighty-three something?
I don't think it was that much.
It would be eighty, it looks like appropriate this year is two sixty-five and change, and you have recommended three forty-five and change.
Denise, could you also reiterate for our colleagues, uh, the sick day buyback impact?
Uh, yes, so that was negotiated in the last contract that the, um, currently, three members of the DP, highway union are allowed to buy their sick time back instead of carrying it over. So they, that's contractual, that twenty-two hundred dollars.
My, my input on this hiring two more employees would be, um, it's two more insurances, two more pensions, two more this, two more that. I know, I was a comm, a commissioner at the cemetery years ago, and we had one full-time person up there and a part-time person, the job got done. And when I was there, very seldom did the highway come up and help because at that time, they didn't help. And I've heard in the past that the highway has gone up to help them and, you know, when the, the mowing gets tough or whatever. But, you know, I don't know, I just, I'm not for two people at this time on the highway. I'm just, that's just my opinion.
I believe Bob needs probably one more person, but not the part-time person at this time.
So you think in the junior or the senior operator or just?
I think the one with the more licensing would that.
Is needed or not needed?
The, the licensing is needed.
So that's a senior operator?
The senior operator.
That's who I would have did too. That person could be versatile, and the person could be doing more than one job if, if need be, so.
Right.
That's where I was heading with it.
Because we, we lost an employee from the highway department who was, had many, many licenses, and we replaced him recently. So there's now three people there, and we have agreed. I felt one more would be appropriate.
So there you go, Bill, we haven't helped you in any way. I want two, he wants none, she wants one.
Well, this is.
Well.
But we haven't voted.
I was gonna also ask, we have the somewhat related, the twenty-four thousand dollars in the new lease cost that's being just built into the snow budget. Should, if that's in the snow budget, should that not be increased by twenty-four thousand dollars since?
Can you bring that?
Are you talking about the new, uh, snow blower or whatever?
Yeah, the new snow blower is approximately twenty-four thousand dollars a year in lease, correct?
Correct.
And that is going to come out of the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in snow and ice removal for next year slated.
Correct.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so the thought.
So my question is, is it really only a hundred and twenty, not a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in snow and ice plus twenty-four in snowball release? And should that not be almost increased? So that we have level funding on the snow and ice since the last few years?
One, we have one sixty?
One sixty-five, yeah. I mean, this year, we're at four oh three. Last year, we spent two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so I don't know what the years before that were. So not to increase the budget, but should we be looking at, you know?
More accurately reflecting it.
More accurately reflecting it.
Well, the thought process when Bob and I met to talk about that was, you know, as you know, snow and ice is sort of a crapshoot. We could have a year with no snow, we could have a year with a lot of snow. And we can legally cover the cost of the lease with the snow and ice budget because it is dedicated for just snow and ice removal. So, and where the snow and ice budget is one that we can legally overspend with obviously the proper approvals, we figured it was best to leave it at the one sixty-five. That way, we're not putting money in a pot that we may not need next year. And if we do need it, we do what we've done every year and find additional monies in the budget. So that was the thought process.
The other part that I was gonna say, in the highway budget, there's still a part-time number built in for part-time help. Is that summer help or is that the leaf?
The, the five thousand, so if you decide not to fund one of the positions, we would have to see from Bob what he would need to put back in part-time wages. Because that five thousand is only for the, the leaf collection. So in that, original twenty-two thousand dollar number was the number he was, what he usually hires to supplement the full-time staff cutting the grass.
But wouldn't that, wouldn't the one-time person fall into that number?
Well, he's requesting two people. So if you're only gonna give him one, he's still gonna need probably some type of part-time assistance in addition to that.
I think he, he explained to us that, I think it's a problem he had, he said he has a hard time getting part-time people because of the licenses and stuff. If they have those licenses, they don't, they're not interested in it part-time, they're interested in it full-time. And that was one of his difficulties he was having, if I remember right. Wasn't that what he said?
Yeah. What does the junior operator have for a license, Denise?
Um, I'd have to look back, I think it was just the CDL, but not the hoisting. The senior operator needed the hoisting license.
I'm, I'm just, this is just a thought. So why don't we hire one part, one full-timer? If we're gonna eliminate, out of the three positions, we're gonna eliminate one. I wonder if it, if it could work to hire one full-timer to handle both the cemetery and the highway needs. Not a, not an answer that anyone would have.
Well, I, but I will answer to that because you have two different elected committees overseeing those departments.
Got it.
So that was part of the issue when they consolidated the department before was you had an elected cemetery commissioner, there's an elected highway commissioner that may not have always agreed to where that employee needed to be at what time. And I think you'd have that same issue if you have, if you're sharing an employee.
Having two masses, I think it was the problem. And I think, and I think with the, and I, and I believe if you talk to the different groups, you'll have their different answers. You know, uh, and it's just what, I don't think it was working well. I think it's, I'm being nice about it.
I know, you, you witnessed that.
Can they work for the, can they work for the board selectman? And I think that you'll find that trying to take the cemetery help out and put it in the highway, the problem was too, the cemetery help didn't have the right licenses to go to the highway.
Yes.
That's correct.
So that was a problem as well.
That was his problem.
Right, right.
And the licenses on, going on the cemetery almost overkill, so.
So my point is, is we're coming out in a deficit this year, so I'd rather be more cautious and go with the one person, be cautious. And if we don't get by the next year, maybe we can go for another person.
Are we still looking at it? What is the deficit with this, at this point in time? Has it, has it changed since we added those salaries we had talked about?
No, it's slightly less because of the two minimal decreases. So it's about eighty-three hundred. Right now.
How much was it?
Eighty-three hundred.
Eighty-three hundred?
And that's what.
That's what the tree warden stipend and the elder care, elder services decreased to zero.
One of, one of the big items that I, that I always saw, and I've always questioned is the education fund. I mean, I know this year, we went up quite a bit in education, and I know we're being, you know, I call it penalized because we're a rich town and what have you. As I told this board the other night, and I might be out of line by saying it, Groveland in the last, you know, couple of years, we had a lot of foreclosed houses in Groveland. Those houses have now been sold. And we're being penalized because those houses have been sold. And now they're calling us a richer community, and they feel like the kids are gonna go into the school system. And I challenge that because I wonder, you know, is this a fair assessment? And I'd like to find the fair assessment. I know we talked the other night, and our state colleagues are coming in next week, and we probably could ask those hard questions to them. How'd they come up with their formula? How'd they get to that formula?
Well, there was another, you, you reminded me of something. When you look in the education section, uh, when you look at the Northeast Vocational Technical Assessment, we've always, we pretty much had two schools, and the third school was the Aggie. Now the Aggie has turned into North Shore, Northeast Vocational. I don't know what agreement we're in, but now we currently have two vocational schools. So I, I, the kids that have been in there, that, you know, that it, you know, that at the point of graduation or whatever. But I think we have to look at, do we still wanna be a part of that where we have two vocational schools that we're paying for? Because that's gonna grow. And we, and we're having a hard enough time control, you know, keeping an eye on the two. And we're, we're trying to forecast all this, you know? If you just listen to the vibe of what's going on and watch what's going on with the school, I mean, this, they're gonna be coming to us for a new high school at some point. There's just no doubt about it. It's coming. It's coming like a, a freight train. And, and it, it's no, no doubt that that's gonna happen at some point. So now we're involved with two vocational schools. And I don't know how, I don't know the history behind how we got into that. I know that the Aggie ended up changing. And, and obviously, the kids, it's not the kids' fault because things change. They, you know, let them get through the courses. But I don't know if we should continue on with that.
I don't know.
Should we put an end to that?
I don't think we can leave there, can we?
I don't know how we can put it into it because I've raised the same question last night.
We, we've talked about it. It's because the Essex Aggie would offer courses that Whittier didn't have.
Yeah.
So for a kid that wanted to go for horticulture or veterinarian service, I don't, I, we, we just needed to have another choice for them.
Right.
And we've been looking for that agreement.
And we can't find it, Bill. We don't have an agreement. I wanna see one too. I express the same concern. A young man, a woman, a talented student that gets accepted at Whittier and seeks a specific, um, major, for lack of a better word, that doesn't exist there, legally, they can move over to Northern Essex. We have nine kids in there now. I'm sure they're great kids and do shit support.
North Shore.
North Shore. Where's it, but I'm looking at a hundred, I'm looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollar assessment, and I don't have a contract. I'm not comfortable tonight with that either.
It's gonna grow. It's gonna grow. And as, and, and the prob, the concern is, and like I said, I have nothing, you know, every, everybody has their own talent, you know? There's some, there's some kids that go to vocational, and, and that's, that's the place, because that, that's where the, they can, uh, really meet the standard. And that's, that, that's where they go on, you know? They're great, they excel at it. And it, you know, I understand we have to offer different things, but we are just a little town. How many things can we offer? And that, and, you know, at some point in time, like I said, I'm not saying, hey, sorry, kid, you're a junior, we're gonna cut you out now, you're not gonna, no. I, I say, let them complete, the ones that are currently enrolled, let them complete. But it, this, I almost, when this originally came out, I think it started with, why did we get some bus, uh, money or something like that at the time?
Yes, so we started getting chapter seventy money from the state. And it turned out the chapter, so when, when we were with Essex Aggie, uh, we did not have a budgetary line for that tuition. It was a cherry sheet assessment, so they automatically just withheld it from our cherry sheet money. I don't know what changed in the process. Again, that was before I came here. So somehow, it went from being a cherry sheet assessment to being budgeted for, and yet, the state then gave us forty-two thousand to offset. So it's really a net of about eighty thousand that we're paying to, um, the Northeast Vocational. I, I don't know, we, I haven't been able to locate an agreement. I don't know if an agreement exists. But to be honest, we don't have an agreement with Whittier either, so I don't know. I don't know if it's something you're obligated to send students to.
Yeah, I was wondering if at some point in time, I mean, just because it changed from the Aggie to, uh, Northeast Folk, that doesn't mean that we're automatically in the game. I, I would say that someone had to sign something, someone had to agree to something.
We don't know if we're required, we don't know if we're required to have that number and carry that money. We don't know because we don't have an agreement.
And let's say, I mean, I don't know, if, if someone have to go back in the history on it, if someone, you know, like, we're involved with Whittier. There was a, some sort of a regional agreement that we, at one point, we agreed to. Was it something that legislatively was done? Or is it something, you know what I mean, automatically because we changed names to something else? It's just, I just can't see we, that we can afford to be in a game of two vocational schools. That's all I'm concerned about.
We have the same questions.
I, I, I think broadly, you're, you're expressing a consensus that we all share with you, Bill. We just. So what's our responsibility? Uh, what do we do? Do we maybe, I don't know, do we hire counsel? Or find a document and do some research? Or one of us pick up the phone and call Northern Essex? I mean, I'm willing to do some work to find out.
We did hire counsel when we were looking for our liability on the landfill.
That might be the answer because.
Phil Huey brought somebody. He was the document whisperer who went through our files. We did find a small insurance policy from Fireman's Fund that we were able to put towards that debt we had. So maybe we should. Maybe we should talk to counsel about that, it's worth a try.
I mean, I can certainly call them, but I don't think you have anything with Northeast Vocational. If you had something, it's with Essex Aggie. Because I think you would have remembered just a year ago, cause it's changed just before I started.
Right.
Yeah, I was surprised, it was just a surprise it popped up, and it wasn't, we didn't have the answer.
Right. No, in May, in, oh, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
At this time, though, we should, we should probably do our due diligence to get to the bottom of it.
Yeah.
Right, well, I think you, I mean, you do have students there, so.
Right.
Right.
You know, whether you put a moratorium on and not allow future students, that's one thing.
Right, we're not gonna tell the students not to go, but at least we know where we're heading, and, and what kind of increase we could have year to year, at least we're gonna have a good foot, foot on what's going on.
If we can legally disengage from any agreement, uh, obviously Bill's idea is the only way to go, we phase out remaining classes and go from there. Uh, just to, related to this, uh, as a bit of a bone of contention, you should, you should know, the Regional Finance Committee, of which I'm a member of, is going to have a summit meeting, for lack of a better word, in May, I forgot the date, I think it's May fourteenth. We've asked the Whittier to come in, and we wanna talk to them about the agreement. There is a document out there, we don't know how old it is, we don't know what's in it. You know, remember Obamacare, Pelosi said, you know, we gotta pass it and find out what's in it, we're kind of, we're kind of there with, with that. We're very concerned about a lot of issues regarding Whittier, and examining the agreement is part of that work. Whether we can ask this group to also do, uh, Nor- North Shore, Nor, I'm sorry, what's it called, uh, Northeast. I'm, I'm not willing to wait for May, I'd rather hire an attorney and find out in the next forty-eight hours, cause I'm feeling really uncomfortable with this. And I expressed that, and we're in agreement.
Yeah, I just think it's just gonna keep growing, and, and, and like I said, I don't begrudge anybody.
Of course not.
You know, it, it's just, the thing is, is we have to, you know, which game are we in? Which folk, it's either Whittier or it's Northeast, you know?
You don't wanna begrudge anyone, I agree with you, and, and, and we, we have a number that we don't know a lot about it. It's a big number, and I think we, we owe the taxpayers the right to find out what that number's all about, that's my opinion.
So at Betty's discretion as the chair, if you're, at your discretion, I certainly will support you, you don't need a vote from us, you need consensus. If you, if you are able to engage with counsel to get us an answer on that, I'm all for it, we spend some money there.
Well, I'll call the school before I call counsel.
We'll do that, um.
No rush, immediate would be fine.
There was, um, another thing in the insurances.
Fine eighteen.
Eighteen? There was an increase with insurances. It was the property and casualty insurance, was that, is that an increase that was due to the open space that we bought up?
No, that's an increase, cause we've been underli, we've been underinsuring our properties.
We have. So it wasn't because we own more, it's, it's because we, we, it was recommended we should have a better liability?
That is correct, so the open space automatically falls under our policy, we did not have to increase anything to, we paid for title insurance and things like that, but the premiums did not increase. We've added some vehicles, we've added some, um, equipment, and then our buildings were dramatically underinsured. So that was at the recommendation of our insurance company. Our, um, the policies to ensure our employees and vehicles and things like that was also lower than it should have been. So, um, that represents the increase to where the insurance company recommends safe and healthy levels for the community.
Was it, now you mentioned title insurance and stuff like that for the other open space, was that, was that, uh, stuff that was paid for from the town, or was that something that was paid for from a different committee, or CPA funds, or anything like that?
No, so the title insurance is coming out of the town, so this year, you'll see a request, um, one of the, I believe it's a special town meeting transfer to cover, um, the insurance of, for the extra premiums.
Okay, so I don't wanna, we're on the budget, so I don't wanna sidetrack us.
No, the, um, the, the community preservation paid for, um, the legal expenses with the, with two of the three properties. So the additional legal expense was covered by the community preservation administrative account for the two that were purchased with CPA money. But the title insurance was a town expense, um, that the Board of Selectmen decided we needed because of the issues with the titles. So that's an expense that came out of the current year's property insurance.
While we have your attention in that cap, in that area, if you take a look at that employee group health insurance, why, why Denise bumped that up slightly from three forty-five to three fifty? There, there's another, uh, personnel addition request from the police department, which we'd like to get your opinion on. But that, three forty-five to three fifty is kind of a wild number, if, in, in a way, because it, it just assumes possibly bringing on a total of three new employees.
You're giving me a different number than I have, you have three fifty?
I got three forty-five here, and then it goes up to three fifty.
Okay, I have three thirty-five.
Oh, okay.
And the insurance?
Yeah.
I have three forty-five.
Okay. Okay. Um, right, so, so one of the issues with, um,
Okay.
One of the, not really issues, but when you're bringing on new employees, you obviously don't know if they need insurance, you don't know what type of plan. So that increase was really just an estimate of
A family plan.
Not even, you know, an individual plan versus a family plan versus who might need insurance, who may not. So that's really a complete estimate based on who the, if, if in fact you decide to hire new people, you know, who's hired and what insurance they need. So that may go up or down depending.
The choices of plans are significantly more this year, um, they have much more expensive plans, but Denise shared with us, uh, one of the most popular, one of the best quality plans, fortunate for us, happens to be one of the lower cost ones. So that's a, that's, that could go anywhere, if we hire two people and they get the most expensive, or five, you know, we hire four people, it, it, just to kinda bring that to your attention, that's, her estimates, we felt were very, very conservative, but that one there could kinda go almost in, in any direction, we just don't know.
Correct, and I did, um, send communication out to all employees today with the new insurance rates. And given some of the changes, and I think you're in the GIC, so you may know, but given some of the changes with the health insurance, and the fact that plans are going from PPO to POS plans, and employees are gonna need referrals and primary care physicians, um, you know, I did put information out that if people wanna switch to a different plan, and so if anyone changes it, yet that cost will decrease if they change to a lower costing plan. So there may be some movement, just given the dramatic changes that the GIC is facing this coming year. So that's why I figured to increase to just the three fifty, if people, if we have a few people change, and we hire some people, we still may save money, so.
Bill, you had, you, you were gonna say something about this insurance?
No, I was just, what I was gonna say is, we have roughly four employees that potentially we could be putting on in this new budget, and I believe it's gonna cost us roughly ten thousand each for insurance, so that's quite a bit of money.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially.
Well, that's the, that's the town's portion of the lowest cost of the family plan.
Right, right.
Right.
So we're taking, you know, quite a bit on there if we do it.
So are you thinking that maybe that number should be higher?
I'm thinking we shouldn't have as much new help.
Okay, that works as well.
Sorry.
No, worse.
I say it the way it is, unfortunately.
No, it's okay.
No, one goes with the other.
The four, the two highways, two full-time highways.
I think it's three now, after this evening, it's now just three.
Right, but originally the four were two highways, and who were the other two employees?
Police and a potential fire department employee.
Okay, so, uh, can we talk about the fire department employee we didn't know about?
Sure, no, no, you know, it's the fire chief.
Oh, the fire, oh, 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 okay, all right, well, we already talked about that.
We did.
So they have settled, they have decided this evening, and the board voted, so he will not be benefit eligible for the town to pay anything, so that would have been the fourth.
Okay, so then, if we only get one highway, then we're down to two, okay, all right.
So you, you mentioned the police department, they're looking for a full-time employee.
Yeah, don't look at me, it wasn't my idea.
Well, you, you mentioned it, so we, we
No, I'm just kidding, I'm joking.
We definitely gotta talk about it.
Yeah, we want, we want your opinion on this.
The thing that's happened back and forth, I noticed over time with, with the police, and, uh, is that they've come in at different times, and they tell me their, their issue with, um, getting people trained and stuff, they, they're always, you know, they kinda come in with a low ball figure of five thousand. But they have a hard time training, and that was part of their argument with this full-time. But I also asked about the cost effectiveness as, aspect of it, and whether that would, there was something about the reserves that affect, it was better to have a full-time trained person, and it, and it effect, it helped with, uh, the way they do things at the department, and I thought part of it was training, cause they have to replace guys when they send them for training, and also there was something to do with the reserves, I thought that was the argument they had made. I'm not positive.
Yes, so the
But they always, they always have a difficult time with the, it, it, the only thing that concerns me is every time they come in is about the training aspect of it. And whether, you know, it's a liability issue for the town if, if people aren't being trained enough, that's the only thing. I know there's certain standards that have to be met, the same thing happens with the fire department, I'm sure it happens with the police, that, I, I know what happens with the police. And there's different, there's just different things that you have to recertify in every year, so that's just, you're obligated to recertify in it, and God forbid anybody has to shoot someone or anything like that, or, you know, all the way to CPR and using the defibrillator or whatever, it's all, it's all things that someone's gonna come back and say, well, let me see your training, what have you done, and that's, that's what happens.
So their reserve, um, what the chief had explained to me is, um, and the reason they were requesting a full-time officer was, if it's a full-time officer, they have a dedicated shift, they know what their shift is, Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday, Sunday. With reserves, sometimes they have a hard time getting reserves, um, if a reserve is out, then they don't have someone guaranteed on that shift. So that was the issue with the reserves, is you just have more stability, and someone knows what their shift is consistently, if you have a full-time officer dedicated to that, versus wondering who's available that night as a reserve.
So how many patrolmen would that bring us up to, full timers?
Ten.
Ten.
I believe. It would be five patrolmen, um, um, six if you count the detective.
The other night when we had this discussion, um, I asked the question, if you took a reserve and you took a full-time officer, what is the cost gonna be to the town? It's about twenty-six thousand dollars to the town, to, to change from a reserve to a full-time officer, and, and don't quote that exact number, but it's around there. And, um, how I feel is, I would hope, I would hope the person, if there's a reserve officer over there, there'd be a full-time officer with him on duty. And I would hope there's not two reserve officers together at any given time, if they didn't have the right qualification or whatever, but, I'm, I'm, I wanna, I would like, that's one area I would personally like to hold and hire no more myself, that's just me.
The num, the current number was six, or was six after?
No, so they have four straight patrolmen, um, one patrolman slash detective, so five currently, they would be adding a sixth patrolman. And I believe the explanation was they, they would like to have two full-time officers per shift, and right now, I think one of the shifts was a patrolman and a reserve. I think the overnight shift is a patrolman and a reserve, so that's why they wanted to.
They have a chief, a deputy, two sergeants.
Are you showing on your sheet, we have a drop in reserves expenditure? Well, if you look at the difference between the department request of one thirty and what the finance director is recommending ninety-three.
Okay, so, that would account for that?
Yeah, if we're, if that was possible, if that is doable, it takes a little bit of a bite out of the full-time addition.
Where were these overtime wages before, was that in this other wages as well?
I don't know.
Yes, so the other wages previously included reserves, um, training, overtime, everything was consolidated in that one other.
That was one thirty-six, and he requested approximately a hundred and sixty K.
Yes, but also keep in mind that he consolidated the communication dispatch budget and the animal control budget all with, under the current police department, so he's consolidated those three just in the nu, the numbers you see there now.
They were different departments before.
Correct. But they're all overseen by the police, and the officers do the work, so he said it made sense to have one budget instead of three different budgets.
Lot of moving parts on this one.
Yes.
Well, more reporting lines, because I, you know, there were, things were just locked together a little bit too much last time, last year, so.
So thirty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars was reduced from the reserve patrol line. So if you choose not to fund a new officer at fifty-seven thousand and change, we need to add back the thirty-six into the reserve line.
So the salary position is what, fifty-three?
Fifty-seven thousand four thirty-eight seventy-nine, that's with the step one of a patrolman, and then the ten percent midnight shift differential.
Okay, so in a simplistic world, if we take that fifty-three and subtract the difference, reduction in the reserves, we have, is that the twenty-six thousand that Bill was talking about?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
But then we still have to add ten, ten-ish, we don't know, ten-ish, for, for, um, insurance.
If they take it.
If they take.
If they take insurance, and would, would they be eligible also for the retirement fund, so would that not increase our
That increases it.
Our liability on that as well?
No, so, just one thing on the, the retirement, um, most current employees, employees that are paying eight and nine percent to the pension fund, which is everyone hired since nineteen ninety-four-ish, um, are pretty much paying for their full pension. So the pension appropriation that we're paying, um, is really for the older retirees that were paying five percent and seven percent, that weren't fully subsidizing their pension. The town had to then subsidize that, so now as more of those retirees are, um, retired, and now the new employers are coming on, they're really, so we're paying less and less towards people's pensions now, because they're fully funding it. So the, the retirement really wouldn't, the other post-employment benefits would be affected, but we're not dealing with that in our current budget at this time. But the actual pension contribution wouldn't be affected.
So it's easy for us to evaluate, you know, just the numbers, and, and that's our responsibility, I just, I don't have an answer in terms of operational, operationally how it's more important, and I, I, Ben, you know, same thing with Bob, I mean, he's, and the chief, uh, police chief and, 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 um, Bob Eric Hilli and our highway commissioner, they're, they've got some operational concerns, and, I don't know, I wanna make sure that, uh, we're aware that, uh, there's probably some really good reasons, that, and things that we might not see that would compel them to make these requests, but what I don't have, Bill, is the history that you have, because I've spent six years on the school committee, and you've got some history, and you're seeing some things that there's been a history.
Yeah, there's a little bit of
A pattern that sometimes these requests are suspect, not to offend anybody.
Well, sometimes it's, sometimes, I mean, like, the cemetery and the DPW thing was supposed to be a cost savings thing, but it just didn't work out between the two departments, you know what I mean? So orig, originally, it might have sounded like a great idea, but it didn't seem like it worked, so, then, you have to change it.
One of the things that I did learn, uh, which we learned at meetings, uh, you got in the police department, there is a huge unfunded mandate about what you had talked about, especially if a gun goes off in, in Groveland, the first thing they do is they start looking at, what, did you have the right training and, and all of that? So I have to believe that the chief is probably motivated by some of that operational effectiveness that is required, that is better expressed through a full-time officer than a reserve that may or may not be available, I'm just guessing, but, you know, we need to bring them in, they need to come in and defend their position. That's where, I know that we're all crunched for time, but if
Haven't they been in before?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they came in, they came in to talk with us. They did, and they, and, and like I said, that's where we went, everything I gave you was basically what we went over. So was there anything else on the budget? That was just off the top of my head.
And the clerk from the fire department is gone for next year?
That position, right.
One, I wanted to share this with you, one strategic concern that I have about the budget. You may remember, uh, from the stabilization fund, I think we had one point two million dollars, and a couple of years ago, we decided to take out seven hundred and change because we had done some dumping at the Hable dump, and we figured it's better off to pay that instead of going to litigation, and God knows what we were gonna end up with. And somebody found an old insurance policy in a safe and threw in a couple of hundred thousand in there. Denise answered my question, and you should know it, uh, my question is, are we able to, uh, put some money back into that stabilization fund this year? The answer's no, but strategically, I'm feeling very uncomfortable that we're not, we don't try to repair that stabilization, that we need The answer's no. But strategically, I'm feeling very uncomfortable that we're not, we don't try to repair that stabilization that we need to come. I don't care if we had fifty thousand in there, we're getting nothing in there this year.
You reminded me of something that, but it's gonna shift me to warrant. Do we wanna stay on the, uh?
No.
Well-
It's an open discussion.
Eh, what, what, what happened with the warrants was that we, we got these Monday and I think you, you got them Monday too. We started looking them over, but as a committee, we never got to come up with any
Recommendations.
Any recommendations or consensus as to where we wanted to go, but giving it a quick, a quick once-over on some of the stuff, um. The, let's see which one it is.
Ten. Article?
Yeah, article ten. Article ten, um, is this, has this been left vague for, because we haven't decided what direction we're going in yet? Or, and is there a reason why it's all been compiled together?
So it was just to cons- to make these articles more concise. You don't have to vote them individually. You could make, vote them as one item. So I just consolidated them into one. It's no more vague than it was previously. Um, in fact, in the, at the back of the, um, warrant, you'll see the actual five-year capital plan I included in here. It's just usually each one of those items was voted separately.
But it doesn't say how we're paying for it, does it?
Yes, it does on the top. So to meet the appropriation, ninety-six, six fifty-nine will be raised through taxes and the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to ba- borrow nine hundred and ten thousand under chapter forty-four. So those items that are identified with an, I guess a one or an I, um, would be raised through taxes and the two items that are indicated with the two is, uh, what is going to be borrowed.
And the-
Borrowing or otherwise, alright.
That's how the language has to.
So that's why.
Correct.
So those two and that would be what you had sent us on a debt schedule with about a hundred grand a year?
That is correct.
And realistically, only the latter truck, I have to bring this to your attention. When we say borrowing, would carry its own financing arrangement, potentially. When we take bids, there'll be companies that will sell us a truck and do financing directly with them.
Uh, we may or we may not.
We may or may not, exact, potentially.
But, but, between that and the communication console, we're really looking at an expense next year of finding room for about another hundred grand.
Correct.
Mike?
Which, that's overall is kind of where I stand, where we, I have issue. We are running extremely tight this year. And as Joe said, we're putting nothing away in savings. We're gonna just start off next year, another hundred grand, try to find another hundred grand. So we need to me, keep that in mind for next year, I think, what we're doing this year, even though we're not paying it this year. We're gonna make sure that we're not signing ourselves up to fail.
If it'll make you happier, we're also negative free cash, which is interesting.
When we, um, when we met with the fire department on the truck, they were saying that they were gonna try and come in on the budget, they're gonna get three competitive bids, um, which is true. If the truck comes in on the budget, which we're hoping it would, does that help the budget any?
Correct. We would not borrow, so I can't, you, I legally cannot borrow the seven hundred and fifty thousand until I have something to borrow. So we have to actually have a purchase or a promise to purchase a truck in, in actual prices.
In, in, in regards to the truck, what happens if they go out and they find a company that says, um, they found the truck they want, they build the spec and they say they want that truck that has a yellow stripe down where the other bidders don't have the yellow stripes, they build the spec to come in. What they do is typically you'll build a spec for a truck, to the truck that they found, we have no control, we, I mean, I don't call it three competitive bids that way. You know what I'm trying to say? They were gonna find a truck, they gotta, when I sat during this, they were gonna go find a truck. It's not like you can go find three. I don't believe, it made it sound like they weren't gonna find three of the same like trucks.
Right, well, I mean, it depends. I mean, it really depends what they do. We'd have to go to the state bid and see what's acceptable. If we went the state contract route, um, I'm assuming there's a state bid for fire trucks where, you know, they have to buy emergency vehicles as well. So, um, if it's something that's on the state bid list, we wouldn't have to get three quotes. We could just use the state, the process that the state's already done. Otherwise, no, we would have to come up with specifications of a fire truck. And if it doesn't call for a yellow stripe and someone's adding it, then-
No, no, I don't mean that. I mean, typically I've seen it done where they'll go find the truck they want. They'll tell the company, we're gonna buy this truck. And there's one component on that truck that the other trucks don't have, they'll say, they'll build the spec based with that component and then that truck is theirs. Understand what I'm getting at? You have no control over it, is what you're saying.
Well, I mean, you do. I mean, I'm the chief procurement officer here, so I don't sign a contract unless I'm involved in the bid documents. So, I mean, they can't just go out and rig a bid so that they give it to the company they want.
Okay. And we can get ongoing advice from the finance committee and also capital improvement, but ultimately, between, uh, Denise handling the bidding process, it, it's our ultimate decision to sign off on a bid, meaning the board of selectmen. So I think we will continue to have some control over the process. That we should be staying clear away from that seven fifty, I think.
Technically, no. I mean, you, that's, you've delegated that authority to me and my initial, that's, that's the, the job description that the state has accepted as the chief procurement officer. So, I mean, I could certainly refer to you and you could weigh in on it, but, um, I'm the one who legally would sign that contract.
I stand to be corrected. Thank you.
I think, I think in the conversation of the truck was, they were gonna let us have the input.
Correct.
I think that's what Joe was just trying to allude to. We were gonna have input and, and know what was going on with that truck as the bidding process went on.
Eh, and there are two things here, like the cemetery department lawnmower. That, that's affected as to who's gonna be mowing the grass and who's gonna be buying what. So that also intertwines into that other item. And town hall technology upgrade, what exactly is that?
Um, just exactly what it is. Technology and town hall is lacking. Um, we have a, an eleven-year-old phone system that can't be updated because the company went out of business. So for instance, the water superintendent who's been here for eight years, it's not his voice on the voicemail, it's not his name on there, because there's no way to change it. Um, it doesn't keep the time, it doesn't keep voicemails. We have a lot of problems with that specifically. Um, then in addition to that, you know, we're running Office two thousand seven, when right now Office two thousand thirteen is out. I mean, we just need to upgrade. Um, technology has really been set aside here. The virus protection, the servers, things like that just needs to really be brought up to speed.
What do we have for backup, uh, online? Do we have any backup?
We do. We, we have a, um, backup offsite. So every night there's a backup made and it's set offsite.
Is the, does that affect the part of the budget that already has in there for technology?
So the technology that's in the budget was more for, um, you know, annual costs. That, I do think that, you know, if you commit to start putting money aside annually, when I met with capital improvements, they felt that, you know, the twenty-five thousand may not even be enough to take care of the town hall upgrades. So it was build a small amount in the budget while investing in more of capital for more equipment and things like that.
So this, this twenty-three grand that's in here, where's that change?
Twenty-five.
Is that twenty-three additional to the twenty-five that's?
Yes, but the money that's in the budget, the twenty, the fourteen thousand five hundred is the support for the financial software.
Are we still gonna have that software?
Yes, yes. That's what runs our whole financial package here. Um, so we can't get rid of that. Um, the computer consultant was money if we needed to bring somebody on to do some work. As you see, that was seven thousand. I, I don't really know what that was, um, for, um, but I'd rather see the money spent on equipment, software, um, instead of just having someone, I can do the work. So I don't, instead of having someone come in and do it.
So that's what I'm saying, is it twen- is that gonna eliminate some of this, the twenty-five thousand here?
No, it's really in addition to.
So in addition to that, and then the hardware and software expense, that's in addition to this other?
So it's really the five thousand that's in addition to the twenty-five thousand. The fifteen hundred is just if we need someone to come in and assist with something. But really, the twenty-five is what we could technically consider as capital. So servers, a phone system, um, you know, desktops are really not capital because they usually don't have a useful life. Um, software is usually not capital, because again, it's, it comes out. So that's what the five is really, to update things that don't qualify as really capital items.
Okay, so it's really basically thirty grand for hardware and software?
Correct, correct.
Alright.
So do we know, is twenty-five thousand dollars just a figure that we just came about? Or is, or do we have actual prices that we know we're gonna spend twenty-five thousand dollars on?
No, it's just a figure. I, I don't even know if that will be enough, because the phone system is usually between ten and fifteen thousand. Um, but when I met with capital, we figured we'll start with twenty-five, see how much equipment we can actually replace with that, see where that brings us, um, and then reevaluate it in the future.
So that will, so there's potential that next year there'll be more technology update?
Potentially.
For the telephone, the servers, everything like that.
The, the phone system is priority one. That will be, so then whatever we can do with after that, yes. But yes, there is potential.
That was ten to fifteen.
Correct.
And, um, alright, where's the other? There's some, there's some cap, some capital improvement, not capital improvement, um, community preservation committee, uh, extensions. That's on special. And, but apparently, uh, some of these items weren't finished within the three years, so they need another vote on it. I look at some of that as an example of what I've been talking about. That we're not finishing stuff and we're just moving on and we're spending more money in other places. I think that, you know, some of these things, I, I know we're going for extensive, we agreed to do these items. And I know that some, someone explained to me that, uh, I guess the bathroom plan at Shanahan Field is, is just been a, you know, the bidding process has been messed up, but the, some of these other items haven't been done and they were voted on back. Let's see, I'm trying to see what the dates are. Two thousand thirteen was one and then?
Oh, one was two thousand thirteen?
They were all two thousand thirteen? So, to keep that going forward, uh, they're asking us to vote. It's, uh, article?
Two, three and four, basically on special.
Yeah, the, yeah.
They're not numbered yet.
They're not numbered yet, but yeah.
So, with Shanahan, with the Shanahan bathrooms, um, so I'd gone on to bid twice on that. Um, the expectation is I will go out to bid shortly, but we weren't sure that the project would be completed by June thirtieth, and that is a requirement. So that is why that one was going to be extended. Regarding the historic preservation of the Vito Hand Tub, um, yes, that was voted in two thousand thirteen. Nothing had been done on it when I came on. So when I was hired last year, it was the Shanahan bathrooms, and then the new articles that were voted at town meeting, which I have since put out to bid, it's just that one, it's just something I haven't gotten to. And I don't know, um, the restrictions on the existing open space properties. I know Mike is here. I, I actually don't know what has happened with that or why that has not been done.
So do you handle, so when all these projects are going through CPA, you're handling all the bids and everything, so?
That's correct.
Lot of work. A lot of work, there's, so?
Correct.
Eight bids, eight things up, that's a lot of work on your hands.
Yeah, we, we talked about that last night. That's a concern. If, you know, if everything gets passed, um, that's an awful lot of bid work.
Yeah, that's some soft costs that are factored in.
Exactly.
If you have to increase your hours or?
In my, one of my questions was gonna be, is if, um, let's just take the bathrooms, for instance. Um, if we went out to bid, and went out to bid and the bid was won, who is gonna oversee the, the project? Who would be the overseer of that project?
Me, just like every other project.
So if a lot of these projects are passed, you really got, you're out on the road and what have you.
Yep.
And how many, did you work on, like this last fiscal year on bid processes and stuff?
So just on the pro- bid process, it was five and a half.
Five and a half, basically?
Cable, the boat ramp, which we both have to rebid, um, the bathrooms, the affordable housing and the first phase of the trail.
So that's the, the other aspect, that there's some of the other items that are, we get into on the regular town meeting. We get into the rail trails and all that stuff. The thing that concerns me about that, the, the items that we're supposed to possibly get grant money for, what concerns me about that, it isn't like you're signing up for a grant and they're saying, we, if you put a fifty thousand dollar match in, we're gonna give you three million dollars and sign here and it's done. It's a maybe. And the question I was asking is if anybody's reached out to any of our local politicians from the state house, Chris Ta, maybe, um, Lenny Mayor, ask one of those, one of them and say, what, what, what's it looking like out there right now? Is it looking like, that, you know, is there, are there really gonna be money coming in for these projects? And the thing is, is it, you know, sometimes we're committing so, hundreds of thousands of dollars to something that's a maybe. That's, that's my concern. And I, I did, I just, you know, I don't feel like signing the IOU, you know, down the road. That's, and there's a few of those type of items and, um, there isn't necessarily an answer on that stuff, that we don't, that's what's definitely happening. If, if I knew a sh- I'm more of a sure thing person, you know, I, I wanna know that the money-
What you're buying and you've got the money to pay for.
Is it definitely, is it definitely coming, um, uh, just, you know, just a ballpark thing? I mean, the, uh, affordable housing committee, the, uh, help back here. I think it was like seven and a half million dollars that, that whoever built it would get the tax credits. And where exactly does, you know, I had asked some of the questions about where that comes from, but is that really out there? When you talk to the, you talk to, um, the Groveland Housing Authority, they're saying the HUD money isn't there and in the past, they looked at that site. And they said that, um, it's not cost-effective. Eh, we're not gonna, we won't give you the money for that. So that's, that's one of my concerns with, that's just one of the projects. Um, the other one, the, uh, the Groveland Trail, the bike trail, there's money, um, that's available out there. Is it still available? Is it, you know, eh, it's, we, obviously we come forward with a plan, there's a chance of getting that money. But is that necessarily locked in, you know? It's not. Eh, eh, and whether, you know, if we could talk to somebody that represents us at the state house and ask them to inquire to find out what, you know, is that where the money's being cut right now to pay for the roads and bridges? Or, or where is, you know, what's going on up there? What's the, what's the barometer up there on top of the hill?
When are they coming to see us?
So Representative Mayor is coming Monday evening to speak to the board about, um, local aid legislative initiatives. And we have invited Senator Ta, he hasn't responded. So he may be here as well. Um, but that is when the board has several things that they wanna discuss with, you know, state level things. So they could certainly add that, I'm sure, to their list to talk to them about.
Okay.
Yeah, I, 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 last night at, um, I made a presentation, kind of philosophical presentation of how I evaluate all of the, um, some of the warrant articles, specifically the, um, community preservation committee proposals, seven, eight of them. And I, for myself, uh, what I iterated last night is, and I won't give examples because it was a long speech, but, um, I, I take a, I take three tests. Uh, the first test, is this an appropriate use of CPA money? Second test is, is the money there from CPA? Can we afford to spend that money? And then the third test is what you're alluding to, is there a financial impact that we can't handle later? So I have to have a yes for the first question, answer yes. Second question has to say yes, and the third question has to say no. So the affordable housing at this hour, I'm, I don't know if I can vote for it or not, because I don't know the answer to that question. And Betty was on the affordable housing for ten years. They didn't do anything, not because they didn't do anything, because they could never get a project that was financially feasible. So I asked for, I missed that March eighteenth meeting, because I was on vacation. But I've asked, uh, I think Bru- maybe Bruce Adams might come in on Monday, because I have that hard question. I know that there was a pro forma that came in. And I, and, and, and I need to see evidence that we can financially handle the impact on the other end, because I do not, I agree with you. I do not wanna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and then say, well, that was expended, but we, we can't move forward because this is an eleven million dollar project that we can't handle. Then I look at other projects. A quick example, Washington Park, does it meet the first test? Yes, it's an appropriate use of CPA money. Um, can we- can we take the money out of CPA, can we afford that, yes, is there a negative financial impact on the other end, no, because for sixty years, we've had this incredible tradition of volunteerism that has proven beyond the reasonable doubt, in terms of what they commit in blood, sweat, tears, money, they've donated buildings and structures down there, and I believe that there will be no negative impact financially, so I would be in favor of that. Rail trail, for lack of a better word, community trail, excuse me, I, I mentioned rail, because if we do expend what is being asked for, we actually gonna get something right away this, this time around, we actually will have the entire off-road piece built, so we're actually gonna be able to walk, and, and, and feel, and, and touch a, a portion of this trail, it'll be built for us, and then I have a document which I, Betty received, I think, late yesterday afternoon, would love to share with you. And I agree with you, Bill, it does not give us any guarantee that the state will give us the money, if we spend whatever we spend, even if we get a piece of it built right away, but what I did learn, and I'd love to share this with you, and I'd like to give you a copy of it, Transportation Improvement Plan, the TIP, the state will come into an area like our area, and have one or two agencies involved in determining how to spend transportation money, so the two agencies that are involved in this area, the Mass DOT, and the Merrimack Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, and I have enough comfort from reading this, that we are doing all the right things that would make a condition where the state would not provide the construction money, I, I just don't see that happening, it would be an extremely low probability of that ever happening, and this provides a lot of evidence, for example, we have a project of enhancing our six point seven million dollar rehabilitation project, already planned for Route ninety-seven. They are specifically interested in what they call the Georgetown Branch, and the New Per, Newburyport Branch border to Boston Trail. So we already have components built in Haver, or being built in Haver, Bradford, and on the other end, where the connection is something that these two agencies are in favor of, so if we're willing to go off the deep end and spend some study money, the chances of us getting the rest of the money to, to have the rest of it built, I, I won't give you a percentage. The percentage and the probability based on this evidence, for me, I'm not speaking for the board, is high enough that I would support that trail, because again, it's, I have a three-part test, has to be yes, is it an appropriate use of CPA money, do we have CPA money to do it, without having to borrow or anything, and is there a negative financial impact? And even the Groveland, the last piece that I'll mention, the, the property in downtown, at this hour, I'm not in favor of it, because it fails my test, yes, it is an appropriate use of money, uh, yes, we can afford it, but I don't have enough information, I, it's too unknown on the other end, as to whether or not we can afford acquisition of a property, so I would hate to spend that money, and then find out we can't go. So that's just how I look at it, but I, I, I respect what you're saying, and that's, my mind, that's how I'm processing the same things that you're, that you're concerned about.
Well, you just have a concern, I mean, it might be a different focus with a different administration in there, on what they're gonna, what they're planning on spending money on, and that's, that's my concern, at that time, there was a different administration in there that wanted to do different things.
You mean, you mean the.
Well, I mean, we, we changed governors.
Oh, okay.
We changed governors, and, and we, we're looking at a deficit, if someone came in and said to me, listen, there's a whole bunch of federal money that's devoted to bike trails, that's right there, and that's where it's going? That makes me think differently, but the, overall, looking at CPA overall, for me, the last meeting we had, we got told that when busing, we took the loan for busing, that there was a decision made in executive session that said why we didn't take CPA money for that. Okay, and that's what, I'd like to hear the answer to that, I'd like to find out from, and I believe that eventually gets put into the minutes, I don't know if the minutes are here, I don't know if they're gonna be accessible, um, I believe there's a minute, uh, problem right now.
I, I think it's been resolved, but nothing's been voted on, so those executive session votes would not be released yet if they have been voted on.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we, we have those.
So, the thing is, is I'd like to see why that decision was made, and then, what, this, like I said, we kept on getting open space funds, we ended up getting a loan, I don't understand why we didn't dedicate future funds of open space towards that open space, and whether, and when we got sold the bill of goods, that it was for the aquifer, and it was to protect the aquifer, is that what we were really doing, or is that what we weren't doing, it was just a lot of, it, it was a lot of craziness during that whole time, and there was no purchase and sale at the time of town meeting, for the first time, then we got an extension, and then there was a problem with titles, and it was all, it went back and forth, and I just didn't understand when we had one point seven million dollars, and I don't know what we had at that time, to be fair, but I know we have it now, so much of that could go to open space, why that isn't continuously being dedicated to that open space, instead of moving on and spending more money that unfortunately has extra costs added to it, and it just keeps on going down the line, that's the problem. That's what I, that's what, that's what drives me.
If I can just say two quick things before you say anything, so, just one thing to keep in mind, though, if you did use CPA money on that, it's open space and open space and nothing else, this group is actually contemplating, looking at using some of that land for non-open space matters, um, businesses, um, commercial properties, something like that, so that would be out of the question if you use CPA money on that. The second thing, obviously, I wasn't here when any of that transpired, but I was told that one of the reasons, and I don't know if this is true, that it was decided not to use CPA money to purchase it, was because if something had changed down the line, and CPA went away, what are you gonna fund that property with, if you're guaranteeing CPA money each year to cover that debt cost? And I, that, I was told that was a concern at the time, when the decision was made. It could've, but I, I don't know if that's true, I was told that was one of the concerns, so.
It's still at the loan, it's just a matter of where the source would come from, they could've dedicated that money, and then when it, we found out, and we still really don't know the cost of it, 'cause this, this is like one of those things that gets pushed off, you know, we don't know how much every taxpayer's really gonna pay for it.
One of my, um, my input on these projects would be, is, as everyone here knows, you can build a house, does your house come on budget? Usually it comes over budget, we have a project here in town that I know of, that it went over budget, we spent a lot of money on that project, that project sits today, for whatever reason, we're not gonna put any more money into that project, and the committee, whoever did it, needs to find the money to do it. My point, and it scares me, is if we enter into more projects, and we don't have a bottom dollar, an end dollar, knowing what the project could potentially cost and overcost, we might be in the si, the same stalemate we are now, and that's how I feel. And, and that's what I'd like to have that end number, which we may never get, because as I just said, you build a house, the house never comes on budget, you know what I mean, you build a garage, it never comes on budget, and that's where I would like to see it go, I mean, that's just, I don't have a problem if the CPA money one hundred percent covers the project, we know, it's, if it's a park or whatever, it's covered, I don't have a problem with that. And, and I don't have a problem with certain projects, it's covered, I have a problem where it potentially put us down the road. And I had a conversation with some people last week, that if you take the trails, they were gonna build in some parameters where you would sell quarter-mile markers, which, it sounded good, I mean, but I just wanna see the package complete, I think that it's been said, I haven't never been in a town meeting, but it's been said, you go to town meeting, and some of the stuff is not totally edged in stone, and we're voting on stuff that isn't edged in stone, it doesn't have that end dollar, I don't feel comfortable with it, and, and the, and the last piece to it, I said last night, and I said it on camera, and I'll say it again, I do not feel comfortable, I know it's our government, I do not feel comfortable in certain projects, you know, these proposals going into the town meeting, fifty-one people raised their hand, and fifty-one people pass a project, what bothers me is, it should, and I know it's our government, we can't do anything about it, but I think that the majority of the taxpayers should be able to go in the ballot box, and they should be able to do and sign what they wanna sign, that's just my personal opinion.
Can't change the structure.
I understand that, and you guys have clearly told me that, I'm just wasting my opinion.
Right, we, we, if we wanna be a charter community and hire a mayor, then.
No, but I agree with you, you can get a special interest group to pass something in.
So, we're, I think the consensus is clear, I, I, I have my three-part test, but we're all feeling the same thing, um, we, we wanna see evidence on the other end, if we make a commitment financially upfront with CPA money that, or anything, that we have a definite on the other end, or as definite as we possibly can get, I feel comfortable with the Groveland Trail, couple of projects, which I mentioned, the affordable, at this, at this moment, I'm neutral, with the downtown, I'm definitely not in favor of it, because I just don't have enough information, so, we're, we're in sync on that, but, by the way, speaking of, of that, have you seen, um, 'cause I learned this last night, but this is really interesting, if I can bring your attention to the last page on debt service, and there it is in all its glory, is the acquisition of busing, you'll notice a principal payment of one eighty-five, you'll notice nothing the year before, 'cause we didn't own it, and you'll notice that interest payment, that's the three hundred and fifty and seven, uh, excuse me, three seventy-five. I don't know if your numbers are different, you can take my, my, my sheet, and I think, Bill, you had mentioned last time we met, that this hasn't come up on our tax bills yet, including the ones that were mailed today, so, so now, this is a ten-year debt service for that piece of property. So just, just so you can visually see where it is, um, um, you know, if you have to comment on it, and, I, I need your, afterwards, afterwards, I still need your, if we're done with, when we're done with the warrant, I have a, I have to ask you guys an opinion about revenue, so.
So will this not be shown on any tax bill in fifteen?
Uh, when's it coming up, some?
Not in fifteen.
So it won't come out until the sixteen bills?
Correct, January first, twenty sixteen, and fiscal sixteen is when.
And my, and my point was, in our conversation was, people have some projects in front of them right now, and they haven't actually seen the cost of the past projects. That's what bothers me.
Right.
Yeah, I thought this was.
And that's what really bothers me a lot, and, and how do you sign up, I'm talking to taxpayers, how do you sign up for new projects when you don't even, and it's the way the government, I'm not criticizing anybody here, it's the way the government works, it's the way the fiscal year works, but how do you sign up for new projects when you don't even see the cost of the previous projects yet? And, and I know people say you gotta go on the website, you gotta be involved, you gotta get involved and all that, but you know something? Not everyone does it, they rely on us, unfortunately, they rely on us to make the decisions for the town people.
Well, let me defend now one thing, because we don't, and a lot of it, all, a lot of us, in our passionate advocacy of certain things, we start kind of blending things together, so let me defend the Community Preservation Act, that money is separate, that has nothing to do with busing, nothing to do with our operating money, it is three percent surcharge, I would never vote for an override or a debt exclusion to build a playground and do the enhancements at Washington Park, I would never vote for an override or a debt exclusion to save some artifacts and important historical documents at the library, and I would not do the same to restore a one hundred and fifty-year-old stone structure at the cemetery, so I am thankful that we do have the CPA as a very, uh, inexpensive mechanism for addressing, uh, what I call, uh, life enhancements, or, or quality of life enhancements, so, just generically on that, so.
And I, I have to respectfully disagree with you, 'cause there are soft costs that are, soft costs.
Soft costs, okay.
Such as Denise's time, she has to go put out all the bids.
True.
If, you know, we have.
Hidden costs.
It's hidden costs, and it's, it's not even really hidden, they are soft, they are additional costs that are not in, laid out, that, you know, she has to go out and bid the jobs, we have to get insurance on this property, we have to do this, we have to maintain it, Road King, Road Commissioner has to do more work. They're not hidden, they're soft, so I respectfully disagree that CPA is not standalone.
And, and it's no different than I said, when you build the house, you know, it's gonna cost extra money.
You gotta build a buffer.
You gotta, you gotta put extra money in there, on that, on that building that house, and knowing you're gonna go over budget, it, it just, it happens. It's kind of a scenario I'm using, but on the same token, it's.
We owe you something now, you've asked for minutes, I've been reading them like a crazy person, early in the morning, can we get them read and approved next week? So that we can release the ones that Bill is looking for?
Other executive session minutes in there.
Yes, I haven't seen the packages, I believe you have everything.
I'm halfway through them, I'm.
Have you seen executive session minutes in there?
Oh, yes, yes, they're in there, I don't know what date Bill might be talking about, if it's more than one meeting.
I don't, I don't know either, that, I just know that's when it was, uh.
Way back.
It was approved, and.
We have a stack this big, and I'm going back, and we're reading, I'm reading them all, I know Bill is.
See, CPA also, there's like, there's different things that happen with CPA, now, it really, yeah, we, we don't vote for an override, but we're paying a three percent tax, and now, uh, states welching on the, the states welching on the deal again, and they're trying to cut back how much they're gonna give us.
They're cutting, they're dropping it back.
They're gonna give us less money, so, I mean, there's, there's another thing, you know.
Writing on the wall.
What happened to the match we were getting before, is it just keeps getting less and less and less, that's why I'm saying, you don't know what the priorities of the state are. This year, it might be roads and bridges, next year, it might be bike trails, they hit all the pencil, what, what the, uh, what's going on at that time.
And, and, in all defense to the CPA, you take the CPA, I don't know the exact match from the town and from the state, I would hate to see us burn all the CPA money in one year, or burn a chunk of it, and then have the state cut out next year. So, I would rather be conservative spending the CPA money, leaving a good chunk in there for future proj, projects myself, that we could afford, one hundred percent. You know, I wouldn't wanna depreciate that money, and I don't think they plan on doing it, I don't, I think they've, they've showed a good, a good layout of what, they're gonna have money left in there, but what I'm saying is, um, if the, the cut from the state is gonna be cut, if it is gonna be cut, I'd like to make sure we have enough money left in there, in which I'm sure they probably would, but.
I think the number is where we have about one point seven right now, I can correct me if I'm wrong, it was about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand in there.
Yeah, that's what they, right, right.
So there's still eight hundred in there now, and.
And that'll be.
And, 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 and the second part of my.
And there is some receipts, that doesn't count what we're getting, so.
Plus the match.
The second part.
And all the match, the match, as he, they're saying is, we don't know what the match is gonna be, because there is.
But there are soft costs, and I agree with you on that, I, I.
The second part to my, um, the second part, what I was trying to get to was, is if the match is, say, four hundred thousand a year,
Right.
I would only like to see, um, how do I say, there's a percentage of it to go into that account, and leave it in there to build the account, to keep building it. And I, it's not, it's not, I don't think it has anything to do with this board, in, in having any input on it, but it's just my personal thought, um, so where the account is, they're actually gonna keep building, and we're pulling out a slower rate, that's how I, I would like to see it happen, you pull out, you, you, maybe not all these projects, maybe you only do two projects, and we're pulling that money down at a slower rate, and we're building it up, and that's how I.
Well, like I was saying, with the, like the land over there, you know, they, they wanna put a committee together now, they started a committee, they wanna put a committee together now on what, what to do with that land, and if.
Which land you speaking about?
Busing, and, and all the three properties.
Busing, that's the.
Yes, the selectmen actually have put the committee, have asked to have a committee formed.
Oh, there's someone else out there asking everybody to be on the committee.
But they, they, they allowed the committee to be formed, so they approved of the committee being formed.
So, so the committee, the committees, they're looking for members that, from different, from the different groups.
Yep.
So, what's hap, what's happened is, is that, if, if they had looked at it the right way, if you really wanted to do something with fields and stuff over there, then you could take that CPA money, and like I said, keep on picking at it, picking at it, picking at it, and then eventually, we would own it outright, and then, if that's what they were gonna do, is that, if that's what the goal was, that they, all these plans that they wanna do with the different, with the land, other than just protecting the aquifer, then that's what they'd be able to do, but if you have a, a note for so much that we're gonna pay on, and like I said, you have to predict the future, new high school, that's gonna be a big one, it's gonna be a huge one.
Forecast.
And forecast the future, and the question I had also, I got my tax bill today, and I got Preserve Groveland, and with my tax bill.
Yeah, I didn't open that piece of mail, can you tell me what's in that?
Uh, well, it was my tax bill, and this was.
Was it a, was it a campaign?
And, and it's the Preserve Groveland letterman with it, and my question is, who pays for this?
Well, you know what?
Where does it come from?
I heard about it, but I haven't seen it, and I haven't read it, so I.
And it has the town seal on the corner, you know, I don't know, you know, I just.
Did everybody get their tax bill?
It's the Community Preservation Committee.
Right, and they pay for the whole thing?
Yes.
And we paid to mail it?
The law allows us to put a stuffer in with the tax bill as long as it does not increase the cost of the tax bill. So, as long as it was thin enough to not increase the price, we can put a stuffer in there.
I'd like to know, does it tell you to get a vote for something?
This is so new, I couldn't even tell you what it says. It just came in the mail today.
Well, is it a campaign?
Town meeting votes on two thousand and fifteen CPA projects. Should we reduce CPA from three percent to one percent? But it goes into all the different, different projects, it mentioned some of the projects on the top.
Some, not all.
And then, uh, what is the CPA and town meeting votes on the back?
So, if somebody were running for election, could they have put a flyer in with your tax bill?
I don't think so.
No.
And then, then also, also, I'm starting to see signs up at different spots about the Groveland Trail and stuff. Is that something that's paid for from?
Probably private money, I would assume.
Private money, right? Not CPA funds or anything like that, right?
I think it would be private money.
Would that be allowed?
I don't believe that, I, I haven't seen bills come through for that, but that wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I.
It's one edge of the property out here, actually.
I wanted to go back.
There's one way?
At like the very front of the town.
I wanted to go back to the bussing, the discussion we just have on bussing.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
You know, you know, Bill, when I, I'm sorry, but you guys are not talking.
I'm sorry.
That's why you're the champ.
And I've been very patient. You know, when, there's something called one-time money? One and done, right? Doesn't go on forever. And those are the projects I'll support. Washington Park, absolutely. And they have a proven track record. The cemetery. The, the library. You know, that's the history of the town of Groveland, the documents are over there, they're, not because those people don't care, but they just haven't had the money to take care of those historical documents, so. It's the unknown, and somebody asked me today about when we connect the rail trail from Groveland to Havil, we have to build a bridge. Is, is that, is, Mike, is that in there? I noticed you, is that in there, Mike?
Got washed out.
The bridge?
Yeah.
No?
Which Mike are you speaking to?
Which Mike?
Michael Dempsey. Do you know, on the rail trail, the bridge, is that, is the state coming up with?
I would ask, I would address it to Mike Davis, he's probably more better versed on that.
Mike Davis, okay, Michael Davis, is the bridge, has that been thought of or budgeted, it is in there? And what's the cost of the bridge?
So, all I can say is that the original proposal, originally, which was given five hundred to five hundred and two thousand dollar estimate, will encompass half portion of the bridge, the current piece that we're asking for funding for this year, and the on-road portion. We're still within the budget, we're in the bridge.
Is that a shared cost with Havil?
It would most likely be a shared cost in the downtown line runs through the creek.
Okay. No, I just, somebody called me today to ask me about that.
Yeah, fair question.
I think when they were in here talking about that, there's someone that talked that the bridge got washed out years ago.
Really? Okay.
And, uh, but I didn't think that they knew the answer about that.
Yeah, I was the one that asked the question. And the way, the way that it was relayed back, I asked the question that from Main Street to King Street, is that part of the, gonna be covered under this lap? They said yes. I said, from Main Street to Havil, is that already built into this plan? And I thought, I thought it was no, but I guess he has his hand raised.
Michael, yeah.
The, the answer is yes. Not in this year's article.
Okay.
This article gets to a hundred percent mastuar construction ready design from Main Street to King Street, correct. From Main Street to the border, including the bridge, we have an estimate for that. Share that with you afterwards. That dollar amount plus the dollar amount that we have a firm estimate for, for the on-road piece, from that term of the said four forty-one Main Street to this establishment here. All of that is in that range, five hundred to five thirty. So, we have, the, the question of, do we have a final, final cost of what we're estimating? We do, we have firm estimates from the engineer for those three pieces, the off-road, that link to Crawford, and the on-road piece. So, so there's a, a lot of confusion about that, but the answer is yes. If you read the proposal for the CPC, it's, it's all, it's all, it's all laid out. And the only other thing, well, I guess while I have a second, there's a question about the support from the representative, the elected officials. So, I have a, a co-signed letter from Representative Vera and Senator Tar that was in the proposal, stating their awareness and their support once we've worked through the local level to assist us in getting state funding. And I, I've got four copies a week in the finance board, between that and the FPTC letter that Joe referenced. I answered a lot of the questions and I've heard it explained. As far as very fair concerns, we have offered and provided, and we have planned answers to all of the questions that were just posed. And I'll leave that and you guys can make your own assessment, in all fairness, the, the answers to the questions will be answered.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I go backwards?
Certainly can.
We're on the Board of Selectmen, we always do.
So, yeah, right, so, to go back to the bussing property, I had been a big advocate on trying to reduce the debt on the property. And one of my ideas was to take, if we could, look at down the road, taking and selling off maybe some commercial lots on the front seat side of that, Center Street, maybe eight lots, whatever. I know at one time, when Bussin owned it, he had proposed some commercial lots in the front, and then he was gonna do forty B in the back. I, I, I know there was some plans around that, that did that, and if it would fit, that's gonna take the debt ratio down that we have out there. It's not gonna go in our general budget, but it's gonna drop the debt, which would help. And it's also gonna bring revenue in to our tax people. We're not gonna have buses out in front of that property, picking kids up in front of those businesses, they're gonna be paying taxes, they're gonna be having the people go down and eat lunch and what have you, and spending dollars in the town. And I think that we should become more business friendly in, in, in finding business projects to help offset our taxes. And I think that's one, one avenue we should look at, and if there is a committee formed, I think that, we, you know, granted, the property could be used for fields and conservation or whatever, but in the same token, we can kill two birds with one stone. We can have the conservation and we can have the business. It could be a plus-plus with town, and that's how.
The problem is, though, the bill of goods that was sold to us, was we were protecting the aquifer and it was gonna be open space. And that was the whole, and, and I think that we should think about, you, you can't completely say you don't want any development. It doesn't work. I, I just read about a counselor that retired someplace, and he came right out and said it, that, um, and he came right out and said it, that, you know, he started, he said, he just retired as a, as a, as a counselor somewhere, and he said, you know, I started off as a tree hugger. Is exactly how he wrote it, right in the article, I'm not making up the words. He says, I started as a tree hugger and then I realized we starved ourselves out, that we had to accept some development. That was exactly what he said in the article, and I, when I read it, I go, well, that's the truth, you have to have a little, somehow you have to have a mix. We're really a bedroom community.
Right.
And, um, that's why we're all sitting here, I going back and forth, because we are a bedroom community, and it costs money to be a bedroom community.
And, and, and I think my colleague, Joe next door to me here, him and I don't always meet eye to eye, but I, I will say one thing, and, and, and we had a heated argument one night, and Joe turned to me and said, you know, you've gotta build the parks, you've gotta invest in the community. I, I, I hardly agree with him, we do. You know what I mean, we have to have places for our kids to go and play and go on the swing sets. We don't have a decent parking Groveland, I've said it since I got here. And I, I, I am a hundred percent on, but in the same token, we have to look out for the taxpayers and watch the taxpayers' dollars and, and make sure they can afford to live here, and if it doesn't become overtaxed, then we can't live here. That's all, that's where I'm, I've always been and I'll stay.
I mean, it's, like, this, this letter here basically talking about the support from our representatives. They're gonna support it, that doesn't mean it's there. You know what I mean? Of course they're gonna support it, that's what they're supposed to do, they, they're representing us, they're gonna support it. Then, no one's writing down saying, you're definitely gonna get this, so many millions of dollars, no way in hell will anybody ever give you that. No one's gonna commit to anything, completely. So, this is just, yes, we, we understand you wanna do that, but, and we support it. Well, I'm glad they support it, but they're not telling us that there's definitely gonna be funding, you know? And it could be sold that way, but I want, that's not the sure thing for me.
Regarding the bussing property, I had advocated quite a while ago, when I was running for office, about possibly doing a conservation subdivision, and I share Bill's idea about potentially utilizing that property and getting some tax revenue out of it. We will have as a community an opportunity to engage in these conversations with the formation of this committee. And Betty and I and Bill are going to be very, very aware that this committee has to be a true representation of this town. Can't be just open space people or recreation people, or just FinCon people, or, it's gotta be as wide as possible so that we can engage in these conversations and explore the possibility of maybe doing something like that. But yes, we have openly spoken about that at this meeting, and there's a general consensus here that potentially getting some tax revenue specifically out of bussing is a doable thing because thankfully, we didn't use any CPA money. So, we actually are free and clear to possibly do that.
But the problem is, that isn't the way it was sold.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you those minutes.
You're changing the whole game because that is, they came out and they said that was gonna be open space. And that was gonna be, and that's why we had to buy it, 'cause we had to protect the aquifer. That's, that is what was sold, it wasn't anything to do with development or anything. We, we, we yelled, uh, fire in the theater, section eight housing's coming, look out, that's, that's what happened. That's exactly, and, and, and they're gonna build on it, and we're not gonna protect our open space. So, it almost sounds like a little shenanigans behind the scenes on that land deal. It doesn't sound right to me, because that isn't what was sold to us. It was sold to us, and, and on top of it, the prices of that land were insane. It was all over the place. There was, there was, there was no good estimate on that land, it went back and forth. And, and now, if that isn't what we bought the land for, then that isn't what was told to the people at that time. They were thinking they were buying open space. And that's why, that's why, in fact, you know, CPA was involved in the negotiation of it too. So, why would a CPA guy be negotiating a price for something that's gonna be used for other than open space?
It's kind of a, but, but in all fairness, hopefully, and I think, Joe might have said it, I've heard it from one of our CPA persons, it wasn't bought with CPA money, and that's the saving grace. That's our saving grace. You know, what it was bought for, what it was, what it was bought for, I think we, we can go in the driver's seat to try and change that. And we can, we can have the dialogue.
I don't know if we would've bought it. I don't know if we would've bought it because that's what, that's the.
I agree with you.
That was your town meeting that got stacked to vote for.
I, I understand what you're saying now, I got what you're getting, I.
You know?
They call me slow, but I guess I bought it.
No, no, I, I'm just saying, that, that is not at all what was advertised at town meeting. In fact, I'd even love to read the Warren article, the way it was written that day. And, and like I said, it was a midnight hour thing too, it was, it was, it was five minutes before town meeting and it was, hey, we gotta get this thing through.
I, I clearly understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, again, is it is a piece of property that's not locked into CPA at this point. So, we do have options, so to try and maybe resurrect what happened, we have the option, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. In all, in all fairness, um, I, I know we're all crazy, crazy busy, but if, if we could read those minutes and try to get them released.
Well, I wouldn't, I mean, they may have been voted if it happened the prior year, I don't know. Yeah, because it was on the, it was first in town meeting in two thousand and thirteen, and then again in two thousand and fourteen, is that correct? Do you know, Mike? So, my guess is whatever meetings you had to discuss the property may have happened in two thousand and thirteen.
Two thousand and thirteen, there was no purchase and sale. Two thousand and fourteen is when they asked for the extension because they couldn't get a purchase and sale in time.
We didn't have one at town meeting.
What's that?
We didn't have one at town meeting.
Right, right, we didn't have one at town meeting on the first one. So, so then, uh, the argument, I said, you can't even buy a house without a purchase and sale, you can't go to the bank and get, you can't do anything, so.
If that's what you're talking about, I can, I remember, 'cause I was new to the board, sorry to interrupt you, Bill, but it was clearly twenty fourteen. I'm, I may be reading it tomorrow morning for all I know, it's coming, May, June, something. So, so in all fairness, we're not trying to indict anyone here or the process. I remember having very difficult but very thoughtful conversations, me, you and Donnie, with the negotiation of the properties. With all of them, Maddalie and Angelini, I remember reading one yesterday morning about Angelini, so.
I was even surprised we actually owned it when I got back here for Finance Committee when the time came because what happened was, is that we said if everything wasn't cleared up by a certain time.
It was a deadline.
And, and what happened was, the deadline came.
It went.
And they said everything was, we have everything set up, but it wasn't signed yet. And it's still been signed afterwards. And that's when I kinda scratched my head and I said, how is that possible? I thought we weren't, I thought the thing, there was no way it was getting straight.
We were dealing with three different parties, three different lawyers.
Yeah, it was a difficult situation, but I'm not making any excuses, we're responsible, but.
Well, and I think the way, if I, the way the language was crafted on that article, if I recall, was that the town's attorneys had to agree that the title was clear by June thirtieth, and they did. At like six thirty on June thirtieth, did come in and say everything was good to go.
About eleventh hour.
So, the article didn't require it to be signed, they just required it to have a clear title by that point. And that, in fact, did come through at six thirty.
At the eleventh and a half hour.
Yes.
So, we're not holding anything back, we don't have anything to hide, I don't believe in conspiracy theories, but, uh, but yeah, let's have a healthy discussion about it and get you the information you're looking for.
Does anybody remember if any of the bussing property actually had the aquifer on it?
I believe a piece of it.
A piece of it did, right?
Correct.
Yeah, to the, to the point that building on it would be difficult. I could go all day on that one, so I'll let the, I'll end it.
Okay.
I'm just warming up, Bill. Bring it on. Please go ahead, 'cause I, I, I have a, I have to have you guys go back to the budget at some point before we wrap up. I just have to ask you an opinion. So, go ahead.
Oh, no, no.
Warrent.
I'm good.
Can I bring your attention to this then, for just a moment? I, I steeped my, I've steeped myself in, in Pawtucket Regional School budget for six years, so this is my first real, serious, you know, take a look at the town budget. So, if we look at the receipts, Denise did a fantastic job in conservatively projecting what our revenues are. And I've received a couple of nasty emails from folks that are really upset that we're using so much overlay money. Now, overlay money for those people that, for the general public, 'cause, and I'm not an expert on, I'm learning this. Overlay money is that the assessor will set aside a certain amount of money for abatements. And hopefully, if we can shut off the camera, when we have those great years, when a lot of people don't show up for abatements, we have this money left over, and it's all allocated per year. So, what's your general feeling about the one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from the overlay? Because that is the primary driver in balancing our budget. Is it too aggressive, do you feel it's a normal thing? Is it something you're comfortable with?
What's recommended?
What was? The assessors released one hundred and ninety-five thousand. Um, in the past, they've released three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand, as I explained to the board last night. That's something that the state does not want us to just keep money in that overlay account, so they actually recommend releasing it every year as your taxes, as your receivables are being paid off, to release that money you no longer need. It was not released last year, so we have a bigger chunk of money that's available that could in fact be released.
Did you go with the one ninety-five?
No, so that, well, we still have plenty of money still in the overlay surplus account.
So, that's not cleaning out the overlay?
No, not at all.
I know you sent us the numbers, but I don't have them in front of me.
To be honest, I don't have them in front of me.
Okay.
I don't know them off the top of my head.
No, 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 she had sent us a spreadsheet that showed her year, basically, and how much was still in there. I don't know, maybe you printed it out.
I may have.
I think you sent it to all of us.
I did, I sent it to all of you.
So, so just get, let's, let's say that number again. You said that what's in there currently is, if I have a blank.
So, the assessors released one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from overlay to help balance the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what, what's actually in there?
Off the top of my head, I don't, there was probably like four hundred thousand, say. And it, you need, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand was put aside each year for abatements. And when those abatements are not needed, the benchmark is you need to keep enough money in overlay to cover your outstanding receivables for each year, so that if something happened during an ATB case. So, as those receivables are getting paid each year, you should be releasing the overlay money because you obviously don't need it anymore, and it's just another way to keep money set aside. So, the state has asked people to release it more frequently. So the state has asked people to release it more frequently. So as I said, we didn't release any, um, actually the last two years. So there's money still sitting in that account that, from two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, that hasn't been released. So part of this one ninety-five is we're releasing the older years and still keeping the more current years with the higher balance that we could use next year or the year after if needed.
And what is the, and what did the auditor recommend? I'm sorry to make you repeat.
That's okay. The auditors in the state, actually it's more the state on this one, recommends that you release overlay each year. So each year when you're doing the budget, you look to see what your outstanding receivables are. You look to see what's in your overlay and you drop your overlay, which means you release it because you really only wanna cover what's left in your outstanding taxes. So as taxes are paid, you wanna release more overlay and put it back into the budget.
Is there a certain percentage they think you should keep in there or is it just?
No, it's really, you just need to keep to cover your outstanding taxes. But people tech, people tend to keep money in there and then use it like lump sums if you need it or. But one of the issues with the state is they have asked us not to keep so much money set aside in overlay.
All right. I did pull up the email with the numbers. So as of March first, you gave me the numbers. There was five hundred and fifty-four thousand and change in there. Pulling out one hundred and ninety-five thousand would leave about three hundred and fifty-nine thousand left in there. And our outstanding taxes are two hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so.
So we have some money.
And I'm, I've.
There is some money. So there's probably what, seventy? So there's basically seventy grand.
Still in excess and then anything else that's paid off, we would have that additional money as well next year.
Yeah.
So is that like rainy day money?
It is. It's another, well, yes. And that's what, and that's why, because it's really for abatements. So that when those abatements are not needed, it shouldn't just be sitting there as a rainy day fund. It should be rolled back into the budget.
So if that goes in, what does that do for us? What does that bring us to for a?
No, that's included. So that's, that hundred and ninety-five thousand was in my projections, which brings us still to the deficit of eight thousand dollars, eighty-three hundred dollars. So on the first page of the revenue sheet, it's one of the very bottom numbers.
Am I check when I say this, there's a difference of seventy?
I'm sorry.
Cuz it's still, there's still seventy extra in that account?
Correct.
So why couldn't you use the extra to, to balance the budget? You can't?
No, you can, but I, I think.
You'd rather leave it in there for rainy day?
No, no, no. But it's, my recommendations include those positions that I wasn't sure if you were all funding. So until you decide what you're doing, I mean, we could certainly ask the assessors to, but that's why.
But also, I mean, that doesn't, but we're gonna be negative next year just cuz you're paying for it now.
Yeah, cuz we really have basically one hundred and ninety-five minus, plus the eight, almost like a two hundred and three thousand dollar budget deficit.
Correct.
That's why I brought it to your attention, so I can get an opinion. Cuz it's new to me. We had other mechanisms on the school committee to bal- balance the budget. This is something I've never seen before, but.
So how much are we?
And I'm fine with it, but I'm trying to understand.
How much are we putting in there this year cuz it's?
One thirty-five.
So we're shortfalling it basically sixty grand.
Correct.
And I, and I have to qualify. That's not the primary driver of balancing the budget. Denise has also done a very good job in recommending, you know, pretty much holding the line. We're, you know, we're level funding or keeping most of everything in terms of salaries up two percent and cutting this little, little, a thousand paper cuts all over this budget. Every department's feeling it.
Certified free cash is negative.
State is still not certified. The last number they gave me was negative two hundred and ninety-three thousand-ish. So one of the things that we're doing is, which you'll see in the special town meeting warrant, is the state and the auditors have said we need to close some of these accounts that are on the books that should not have been. Money was put aside and really they didn't deem it to be a reasonable a good enough reason to put money in these certain accounts. Again, it may be a philosophical question, but when the state tells me to do something, I tend to say, okay, that's what we should be doing. So we are closing some of these off book accounts that, instead of the money that has gone into the general fund each year, it's gone into a separate account. So one of which was called a health insurance reimbursement account, which has over three hundred thousand dollars in it. So if that three hundred thousand dollars was put into the general fund instead of this account, we would have free cash this year. So the fact that we're closing some of these accounts, we're cleaning up our outstanding receivables, we're fixing the problems with the overlay accounts, all the issues that they hit us for in free cash, we're hoping to finalize and fix by June thirtieth so that this coming year we will have free cash. So hopefully, we won't need to use as much overlay cuz we'll have free cash that we can appropriate next year. So we're taking the steps to fix the issues with why we will have a negative free cash.
And when overlay gets moved, that can be also moved with stabilization too if, if, if we did have that kind of year.
Yes.
Right?
And, and I did tell the board and I will tell finance that I do think there's a couple, in addition to stabilization, I think there are two other important initiatives that, one of which we spoke about, the OPEB trust fund, so the other post employment benefits. There is an article on the warrant to just establish the trust funds. It does need town meeting approval. Unfortunately, in the year we are, I couldn't recommend putting any money into it. But I think that's something that each year we should try and be committed to. Some amount of money in stabilization, some amount of money in the OPEB trust, even if it's minimal. And then there is another idea that a lot of communities do, which is a capital stabilization. So you put money aside each year for specifically just capital projects. So again, instead of coming out of budget for seven hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred and sixty thousand, you could then reach into your capital stabilization. So each year if you have ten thousand and you just build that up till you need it for a larger purchase. So I think those are three things that would be good initiatives, obviously stabilization. But those are three things that are good initiatives that if we have money in the future, year to year, we should look at putting some money aside in those reserves so that we have them for the future.
And the OPEB, that's the, the dangerous one floating around out there.
Yes.
But obviously, as time comes on, goes on, we could just tack that a little bit at a time.
Ship away at it.
But is there a point that, should we be considering that we try to start funding that every year completely for that year? And then start paying back all that IOUs?
So we do pay a portion of it in the retirement appropriation that we make. We do start paying for some of that. Yeah, I mean philosophically, yes. It would be great if we could pay the pay as you go cost and then deal with the future cost. The state at some point in the near future is going to mandate that you start funding the OPEB because it is such a huge liability. Thankfully, it's, we have a small community. We have a small amount of people on our insurance. It's only, only three point four million right now. But other communities will go bankrupt with billions of dollars in unfunded liability. So I know you had read through the audit report. The auditors are coming on Monday. And that is one of the items they will discuss with the board, is the OPEB, what our liability and ways that we can actually start addressing that. So it is, it's something important that we need to address.
Not just a goal in specific thing. That's the thing.
It is not. It is not.
Across the state that everybody's concerned about. And that's the only rea- when I read that, it was something that I've always, I didn't know the particulars about and I, I learnt a little bit more on.
Yes. And like I said, the cities that really will, the city of Springfield, their, their liability is in the billions. And they, they don't know how they will ever cover that. They will probably go bankrupt before they can fund their OPEB trust.
So is there an amount that we should be trying to put away every year?
Well, that's something that I would love to work with you folks in coming up with some financial reserve policies and that would be one of them. Either a percentage or a dollar amount that, you know, if money's available, you know, that's where it goes first. Is, you know, one or two or three of those. I think it's healthy to have those policies and then have it dedicated so that when time comes and we say, oh, we have a hundred thousand in free cash, what do we do with it? Well, we know ten's going into each of those accounts, so now we're left with seventy. So I think we should definitely work on that.
Does that have percentages added to it? Is there an interest charged on that when it's old?
On the OPEB?
Yeah. Or is it just that straight dollar figure?
Right now, it's just a straight dollar figure.
What your thinking is, the state will eventually start.
And is a set amount every year that, or something that will fluctuate or increase year to year?
It fluctuates. So we, because we're such a small community, we are, we have an actuary every three years. We need to have a full actuarial every three years. So our last one was in twenty thirteen, I believe. And then they just roll over the numbers for fourteen and fifteen. So as the cost of health insurance increases, obviously, our liability is going to increase. Again, as employees come and go from the plans, you may have more employees, you may have less employees, that number's gonna be affected. The way they calculate that actuary, it's a very complex formula. But basically what they look at is age of all of your employees, age of their spouses, the most popular plans, the actual life expectancy, and you, they project out what type of plans people are gonna be on, who's still gonna be on family plans, who's gonna be on individual plans, and they calculate from the point of retirement until the, obviously, the point of, you know, death. How much it would cost us to carry their insurance at the current percentages that we're paying and at the current, you know, again, some projection for future premiums. But, you know, this year, the GIC was an average of five point six percent increase. Some plans were higher, some plans were lower. So if we have another year that they may be nine or ten percent, I don't see that with the GIC, but it's possible, then obviously our liability's going to increase.
Okay, now I'm gonna demonstrate how Denise and I are gonna sink and swim together. The only two people on this side of the table that believe that Bob Ericilian's request for the staff and the chief of police request for additional staff at this moment seems to be just Denise and I because I agree with Bob and Bob. And Denise has made recommendations at this moment in the budget. So, and we're here to share ideas. So what I recommend that you do, cuz this is what drives me. The numbers are easy, but I know that these two gentlemen have probably important rationale that are a little bit beyond my ability to understand. So I, I did a deep dive and we can all do a deep dive because inside this document are, I pulled out these two letters, which I recommend that, you know, to kinda look at. So for example, Bob, this year for the first time, we will be cleaning the majority of one thousand drain catch basins with department staff. I have obtained the vehicle from our old vendor and cleaned the catch basins for the past thirty years, except for the last two years. With the new storm water regulations, the town has to clean some of the basins twice a year, blah, blah, blah. And then I read this twice with blood curdling detail and became very convinced that the chief of police's request for the staff member goes beyond just money. That's our realm, but he has real concerns, real issues. And, and so.
Can we talk about that one?
You can talk about anything. I, I just, I just encourage you.
Were those written to the board as elected?
Well, I've never seen it.
No, those are in the budget package, all the documents that were given.
Yeah, what?
So that's what I had asked each department to prepare when they were, when they were doing their budgets.
Hold on, hold on. So what, what Denise did is she wrote, she yeah, what Denise asked all the department heads is to, you know, pretty much defend their position. I want this, I want that. Well, give me the details, so. So number wise, I'm totally in agreement. I don't wanna spend a dollar on staff. Then when I read these letters, I changed my mind. I just wanna share that with you.
Okay. So if we go back to the highway, the highway letter you have there?
Please do.
I, I said, when you had said your earlier speech, I said, I didn't have a problem with one person out. I read that letter and I understood that he bought a truck and I understood that he needed cleaning manholes. I didn't see that that letter stated he needed two men. So that's why I went with one.
No, I understand it.
I'm just, I'm, I'm.
We're all just.
You stated yours, I'm stating mine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And as far as the.
You can have, I, I've already read them, yeah.
And as far as the, um.
I have plenty of other readings to do.
Police one, I, I said no because I felt that we're gonna increase, we're gonna increase money, we're gonna create, you know.
I have a different letter.
We have a different version.
Just flip it over. I think you have to flip it over to me?
You gotta flip it over. Yeah, we're, we're trying to save paper here.
Oh, we only got one side.
You did? Oh, no. I copied theirs double sided. Yours I gave you one sided. So you should have.
On the police chief's, the, the one that's dated January ninth.
Yep, I have it.
And then Bob's, I think, was.
And Joe, if I can clarify, I just wanna make it note, I mean, I may support these positions, but I didn't recommend them as far as whether or not I'm endorsing them. It was more to balance the budget. So in order to give you a clear picture, if you did in fact approve all three, that's why I was leaving those positions up to this group to decide. That's not really up for me.
Then I stand on my own.
I just wanna, I may in fact endorse them, but that's not really my call.
And I'll defend the position of both, of both Bobs that I.
I mean, we, we talked, we talked to the, we talked to Bob about it, and he gave a different, he told us his different things that were going on within the department. And he, he was mostly talking about, he didn't talk about catch basins. He just talked about how much mowing you're doing. And I'm sure the roads are gonna be in great shape after this winter.
So I wanted to also publicly compliment Denise for producing this, this important work, her first run with us. I mean, at the end of the day, we have a six point eight percent increase in our biggest assessment from Pawtucket Regional Schools, which in a normal year, that could've triggered the need for an override. The Pawtucket Regional School is gonna balance its budget with only two point, I think, one or two point five, two point one five percent increase. But for us in this little merry town of Groveland, we've been designated as being richer now because of the formula, which is unbelievable, and that is a six point eight percent increase for us. And then when I saw how she balanced the budget with the conservative estimates, with the, with the cuts and the level funding and then the use of that overlay, this is my first experience also with a town budget. You know, at least a close, close look at it. So I commend, you know, Denise for doing a great job in presenting this story to us. And we've got some tough decisions to make in the next seven days.
We're gonna be meeting on Monday. I'm unfortunately not gonna be able to be here on Tuesday. So we'll be meeting on, on Monday night. We're also, we're meeting with the water department and
We're still meeting Wednesday.
For the auditor.
Yeah.
Oh, you will be. That's good.
Yeah, we're gonna try, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna try to stick my head into that. And then, but I mean, it's all, I don't know if we're necessarily gonna have the answers for you Monday night.
Well, when do we go to press?
So I have it scheduled for you to vote on Tuesday because the warrants have to go out.
When do the warrants have to go out?
They have to go out by next Friday. And again, so the finance, you obviously don't have to take a position on the warrant articles until town meeting, so you have time for that. I did recommend to the board that if there is time between now and town meeting, once everything's finalized, to sit down again with the moderator and go through the warrant so that you're not doing it the night of town meeting also. I think it's, you know, it would be good to go through the steps and go through the articles so that everyone's on the same page so that you're not in the back room of the library making the decisions that night.
We don't want you to be in the corner waiting two hours.
So if time allows, or even if it's just the chairs of each and the moderator, just so that, you know, someone's sitting down to go through that process.
So you mean a separate meeting before town meeting altogether?
Correct. So you're not doing it that night.
Yeah, absolutely. And that night there, I'm certainly in favor of sitting with the finance committee throughout it, all of the free hour.
I think Michelle's words should be heeded. We don't wanna start out next year behind the April.
And I do.
Be very cautious about what we do, how we do it. And appreciate her saying that.
And I do have to point out, while the revenues must be up on some points, I have a spreadsheet that I dropped and some numbers and percentage changes. The entire budget, the last copy I have is up almost eight percent. Seven point seven, seven percents with, that's with all the changes to be made, so.
Does that include the debt number? Did you include that in your increase?
Um, that might actually be in there, which should be.
Which would wash, right.
Which should take out, so.
But that's a big one.
I dropped three percent maybe.
Hmm, three fifty. That would take out.
So it's safe to say one thing that we can all agree on, there's gonna be no override request.
I can take out that number.
That's where people just shut off the TV.
I mean, I know it's probably still high, but that number would throw it off.
Would throw it off a little bit, yes. It is still up, yeah.
You guys got anything else?
So will you all be ready to vote, at least the budget numbers on Tuesday, to come up with your recommendations?
I can't be here Tuesday.
I can.
Anybody be here Tuesday?
Or by, I mean, you can certainly vote Monday. You guys can make your votes Monday.
Yeah.
I just need recommendations to put in the warrant.
You guys are meeting Monday?
We're meeting Monday, but our problem is is we have, we have.
We've got water department.
You're still rolling people in, yeah.
And the water department's looking for.
Huge resource.
In English.
A what?
A huge raise.
Really? You're gonna, um.
It's in the town warrant.
It's in the town warrant.
I, I haven't even gone into warrants deeply yet.
But what time are you meeting with water?
Right at 7:00.
7:00, so. We have audited at 6:15 or not.
And you know, it, the way the water works is it's half, half water, half sewer, or three quarters water, water sewer, or whatever you want.
That's right. Right.
That's the way it works, but, uh, there's a, a large increase that we, you know, we have to listen to that, also to figure out.
And that's Monday?
That's Monday, that's Monday. Uh, they asked to see us, we just got that paperwork from them, uh, this past Monday.
Yes, cause I just got it on Thursday.
They just gave it to us, right? And, uh.
It's actually, why is water and sewer in the warrant and not in the budget?
They're an enterprise fund, they're a self-sustaining fund.
Okay.
So, the tax money does not raise that, the water rates raise that, water and sewer rates. So, I mean, I can certainly, if, I mean, if you need more ti- it has to be done by next Friday, so. If you need another meeting, if you need another meeting, I mean, we're meeting Wednesday as well. I cannot meet Thursday, but you all can certainly meet if you wanted to.
You're back Thursday?
But it has to be voted.
I'm back Thursday. I'm back, I, I have to go to a conference from Tuesday to Thursday, but I'll be back Thursday night.
I, I, I think the respective boards are fully capable of making decisions independently, it's just that we're, we subscribe to the theory of sharing the burden. So, we'd like to hear from you before we jump in the, in the pool. So, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of throwing another meeting on, what the heck? We might as well throw another meeting on.
I mean, unless you, unless you're comfortable with your decisions Monday, and you're, be just comfortable on Tuesday.
We can try, but I just don't know if that's actually gonna, if we're gonna pull all that off on Monday, that's the problem.
Well, you can let me know Monday night, or Tuesday morning, if you need me to schedule another meeting for you, for Thursday, or.
Yeah, the only option would be early Thursday.
I mean, in a perfect world, if you guys voted Monday and we vote Tuesday, that would be great. We kinda want you to do it before we do. That's what we did with the Capital Improvement Committee, with, you know, with everything. It's just a ha- that's a courtesy that we want to consider.
Cause you can't make it Tuesday.
And I do know, just, I do know that the process, we're obviously late getting this done. Um, I just wanted, so, just one thing on that. I did send out budget requests to departments the beginning of December. I think departments are not used to putting together their own budget requests, um, figuring out how to defend their budget with narratives and mission statements and goals. I did not get many of them until much later than the due date, um, and then I felt I couldn't really give you numbers until I knew what everyone was requesting. So, I'm hoping that now that everyone's gone through it at least once in the future, it'll be a much smoother process. The budgets will be in, you know, the first week in December, or even by, by the end of December, and then that way, January, the beginning of January, everyone's ready to start meeting. But it was really like pulling teeth to get some budgets this year, so.
Some you didn't get at all.
Some I still never got, that's correct.
Still wait.
That is correct.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Okay.
Bye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm worried about Ashley and Barry, she didn't say anything.
I'm a silent observer, sir.
You what?
I'm a silent observer.
Yes. Thank you, Charlie.